Welcome to July 22, 2025 City Council Meeting, City Council Chamber, 6:30 PM. We'll start with the prayer. Today's session opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be good to this day that we take decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who have worked to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Joining us, student flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Ruck.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Belangia.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getche.
Here.
That's 11 present.
Counselor Mercier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for the 10 people who died in the Gabriel House assisted living fire in Fall River. We pray also for the 29 people who were hospitalized resulting from that same fire. We offer our sympathy to their relatives, family, and friends. I would also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber to all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Amen.
Any others? I do have one to do from the podium, if that's okay. Lynn M. Tessia. Lynn M. Bergeron Tessia, age 64, a resident of Potteckville Section of Lowell, passed away at her home on Wednesday, July 9, 2025, with her loving family by her side. She was the beloved wife of George J. Tessia, whom she shared over 43 years of marriage. She was born in Lowell on October 2, 1960, and was the daughter of the late Pauline B. Bergeron Gamache. She was educated at St. Louis Elementary School and graduated from St. Louis High School. Lynn then attended Hesser College, where she earned an associate's degree in accounting. Lynn was employed at the business office manager of Care One Lowell for several years. She was a dedicated employee who never hesitated to assist the residents and families of Care One Lowell. Whether it was giving a ride, shopping for items for a resident, or just lending a hand, Lynn was always available. In her spare time, she enjoyed playing kino, traveling, taking a ride to the casino, and spending time with her family and friends she would be dearly missed. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please. The lights. They all rest in peace. Section 2, Mans Business, 2.1, Communication for Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to accept a placement filed by Counselor Belangia, seconded by Counselor Chow, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, matters of the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, July 8 for acceptance. Motion by Counselor Dakota, seconded by Counselor Getche, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Public hearing will wait till 7:00 PM. Section 5, City Council motions, 5.1, Counselor Dakota. Request City Manager had a transportation engineer install bollards on the corner of Westford and Steadman Streets and include a timeline on when the line stripping will be completed. Seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Ms. Altman's here, if she doesn't mind coming to the lectern for a moment. I know when my colleagues pack it that there, I took three pictures of Steadman and Westford Streets and what I saw. I think the first one is there were two bollards that were installed actually across the street in the little mini mall there, little plaza right there, which I think was a great idea because from the parking spaces that are there to back up, it's pretty tight. So I think that was good that they put it there. The main concern I had was, as you can see in the other photos that I took, the tire treads marking on the sidewalks onto the ADA ramps. And to me, this, I hate to come back here in a year and say, Mr. Manager, we need to have all these sidewalks and our ADA ramps fixed, as you can see right there. But I was hoping that bollards will be there, but I'm sure Ms. Altman will have a word for us. And the other picture that was before that was asphalt where the streetlights were put is already, looks like it's been damaged or wasn't filled incorrectly. So Ms. Altman, if you have any update, that'd be great.
So right now, the trucks are, when they're making that right turn from Westford on to Steadman, they are having to avoid vehicles that form into two lanes. And when the striping goes in, there will only be one lane approaching that intersection and for both left and right turns. And the trucks will be able to make that turn a little easier because they're not trying to avoid a second lane of cars on Steadman Street. The small depression by the pedestrian ahead will be filled and replaced by, or repaired by Allied, our contractor.
So it's your feeling that bollards are not needed at the corner of Westford-Stedman?
Correct. Once the striping is in.
With the striping, the way it comes in before the new pavement, are you going to be moving that over to the right then, basically?
The, it'll, the striping will not be down the center, it'll be towards the right-hand side to only form one lane.
So they'll be able to take that turn?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.2, Counselor Dakota. Request City Manager have the proper department add Wellesley, Walton, and West Albert Streets to paving list. Seconded by Counselor Getche, Counselor Dakota.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, Counselor Janess.
It's okay with the maker of the motion, I'd like to request that we add Hudson Street to this. There's a section of Hudson Street that has an RSR of 36 and is in pretty tough shape.
That's fine.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.3, Counselor Noon. Request City Manager work the appropriate departments to provide the City Council with a report on the number of ongoing projects that align with the MBTA zoning ordinance overlay.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Yem, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So since the adoption of MBTA zoning overlay, I know that a number of projects has been before the land board, planning and zoning. So want to see what others, how many others on the pipelines, you know, in terms of not just the number, but also each of the unit that's coming up and how many units is going to be there, so to speak. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.4, Counselor Noon. Request City Manager work the appropriate departments to provide the City Council with a report as to the number of ADU applications that have been submitted and/or approved. Seconded by Counselor Yem, once again, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the ADUs as part of the plan for the governors of the state, the state have adopted ADUs and ADUs is, you know, by rights here in the cities. I'd like to have a report as to how many ADU has been submitted, approved by district, so that, so we know how many, what districts, you know, is coming up, you know, as part of, I guess, you know, see how many more housing or in-law housing has happened in the city due to the adoption of ADU by the state. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.5, Counselor Janess. Request City Council adopt an ordinance requiring that all sidewalk replacement projects remain consistent with previous materials, and further any changes in construction materials should be approved by a majority vote of the City Council. Seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was just after our discussion last week. You yourself mentioned it'd be nice to have something that the whole city can get behind. So I think this might be a way to do it. If there's other ideas, I'm open to them.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I thank my colleague for bringing this forward. I think, as was mentioned in the last meeting, I think there's an area that we should really put some thought and conversation into. If it's okay with the make of the motion, would this be appropriate to send to maybe a rules subcommittee and try to carve out a policy so everyone could really spend the time looking at what do we think moving forward would make sense?
I'm fine with going anywhere. Neighborhoods, maybe? Sure.
Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Janess. Neighborhood Subcommittee, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselors, I was just going to say until this is remedied at the committee level, is it okay that I just, I'm going to move forward with the policy, exactly stating this. What was there previously, we'll stay there and we'll just move forward. So if it's okay with the council, once again, the policy that we were discussing actually just today is just simply to adhere to the council's wisdom two weeks ago as to what we wanted to do. And then when the neighborhood Subcommittee meets and has an opportunity to have this discussion, we can turn it into an ordinance or just strengthen the policy from the administration's standpoint, whichever is the desire of the council.
Counselor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Just to add to what Manager Golden just highlighted, I just wish we could at least, we know these roads again done in advance and they're pretty much planned out. If we could just drop the neighbors and say, we want to have a conversation on this because some of it makes a lot of sense. But I just think that it is the neighborhood, they know the ins and outs, and why not just have a conversation with them? Maybe some people want asphalt, maybe some people don't like the concrete. I went to a home over the weekend where they saved a tree by just going and lifting the concrete right around it and made it ADA compliant and went right around it. So I do think there are arrangements where it can work. I think by just cutting the trees down, what happens is the asphalt's going to eventually compose and go down anyway because the root's still there. So it's still going to sink in. So we're really not doing ourselves any justice. Whether it goes up or it goes down, it's still not, so the compaction's going to be different as that tree rots. So I just think conversations with the neighbors are the best route to all of this. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. This discussion was brought forward in regards to trees as well, and we will be looking towards this in the future. So from the neighborhood Subcommittee, I think it might be a good idea that we'll bring the engineers in and everyone else because ADA is our top priority. Now, in some aspects, I'm going to say a term like legal non-conforming. There are some roadways that just aren't wide enough. There are some pre-existing, I should say legal, yeah, pre-existing, sorry. You were at the same meeting, I was at. But we are trying to work through that, you know, is there a way for us to talk to the affected neighbor, typically the tree that's in front of their house? Maybe we can talk to them about a slight easement to make sure it's ADA applicable. So this is just an idea that we've been kicking around as of today, so I think the neighborhood Subcommittee would be a great opportunity for us to talk with our engineers as well as our traffic engineer to have this discussion and at least have the option with our neighbors when we have trees. We do know that some of the trees, they're beautiful, they're old, and some of them just aren't planted correctly near sidewalks. So, but I think there's a better way we can do this in the future.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with Counselor Getche as far as working with the neighbors, but I also would not really agree with making just a solid policy that just says to replace it exactly as it is without the discretion of the manager. I think it's under your purview. I also would like to see the cost associated, the difference between them when we have the Subcommittee meeting. I reached out to you last evening, it's funny Counselor Janess mentions it tonight, about Hudson Street and the horrific condition it's in. Tons of pedestrians walking down that street, lots of poor conditions. I'd hate for us to, you know, you're really digging out of a hole here as far as cost goes. And I think some of this work needs to happen before we, you know, spend too much money in other areas. So that would be my only concern is just to bring forward what the cost differences. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to tell you something that happened not too long ago, probably a year and a half ago. A family had a driveway. The driveway was hot top. The driveway was in deplorable condition over the years. So he hired someone to rip it all up and put a cement driveway in. And they went from the driveway all the way to the curb, which means they went across the sidewalk into the curb. The neighbors that probably didn't get along with him called the city. The inspector went down, made him rip up the portion of the sidewalk to put hot top. Does that make any sense when the guy paid for it himself? But I will tell you that in my neighborhood on Royal Street, and you can go there and look, when you, we had to rip up, we wanted to rip up the sidewalk and take and replace it with cement. So I called the city, I wasn't a counselor then, I called the city and said, what is the procedure? They said, you don't own that sidewalk, the city does. You have to appeal to the City Council and ask the city if you can have relinquish, have the city relinquish the sidewalk and let you have it so that you could do the work. And once the work is done, then you got to bring it back before the council and let the city reown it. And that's just what we did, but realizing that you have to pay for the whole cement truck, it was rather expensive. So we got two other neighbors, the three of us got together and we split the cost into a third. We did three sidewalks on Royal Street. So it helped us a little bit, but technically, it's your sidewalk. But still, you pay for something, you'd like it to be there. So that's what happened there. So I felt bad for that family that had to rip it up and put hot top on the sidewalk. Didn't make sense to me.
Counselor Getche.
Just to bring up one thing, Mr. Manager, when they look at, they're taking down these trees, just grinding a tree down below grade is not going to do ADA compliance. It brings it in for a short period of time, but when those roots decay, that sidewalk collapses. So we got to really be careful when we start cutting these trees down if we're not taking those roots out at the same time because shortly, not in our probably terms, but somebody's going to see that those sidewalks are just going to crack and go right back to the same place. So, thank you.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Do you want to do 5.6 to 5.7 together? Make sense? 5.6, Counselor Janess and Counselor Getche. Request City Manager compose and send a letter to our state and federal delegations requesting that they consider options to encourage the availability of hydro-treated vegetable oil for use in emergency backup power generation here in Massachusetts to help Lowell and other cities meet their climate goals. At 5.7, by both Counselor Janess and Counselor Getche, request City Council adopt an ordinance requiring large generators being installed for emergency backup power generation to be capable of being fueled by hydro-treated vegetable oil or similar non-fossil-fueled diesel replacement product. No seconded. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On 5.6, would like to make an edit and just change hydro-treated vegetable oil to sustainable non-fossil fuel alternatives to diesel. Checked this with Counselor Getche earlier, and he's okay with it. And the reason behind that is I just don't want to paint anybody into a corner here. If we're appealing for options, let's appeal for all the options. I just think it makes sense, we heard from the folks at Markley when they came in, that this is something that their generators are capable of doing, but there's just no supply in the area. And if there's no supply in Lowell, there's no supply in Boston or Cambridge or anywhere else where this might be able to be used. So I think appealing to our state and federal partners and saying, hey, what can we do here to create a supply line so that companies like Markley would be able to take advantage of something like this, reducing the fossil fuel footprint in our neighborhoods and in our city? And 5.7 ties right into that, which is just if somebody's going to put in a big generator, at this point, it should be something that should be able to be powered by something other than diesel. So when the time comes that something is available, that switch can be made. Thank you.
Counselor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I echo what Counselor Janess said. I think that we should probably refer this to the environmental and flood subcommittees. I think that we don't know if the state is even talking about this yet. And they may be, they may not be. I don't know if it's a top priority for them, but I think it might be something just to dive into and see, can we make a difference in those neighborhoods? When we look at diesel burning, you see the higher rates of asthma, you see the cancer rates in the neighborhoods. There's a lot of health risks that go on, whether they're, you know, whether people believe it or not, if we can just look into where we're going. So I would make a motion to send, refer this to the environmental and flood subcommittees.
By Counselor Getche, seconded by Counselor Janess, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely agree with Counselor Getche's idea to refer it to a Subcommittee. I don't think this is very well-vetted at this point in time, just as it is. We don't know, there's no limits or anything requiring anyone to do anything. I am a little bit surprised, I did make a motion to table the Markley vote to bring it to an environmental Subcommittee meeting to have this discussion, as Counselor Getche had gone, you know, had agreed with that. So I do support this, but I do think it definitely needs to be further vetted out. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.8, Counselor Scott. Request City Artida review and provide a compilation of infrastructure spending allocated by district for the last five years and yearly going forward. Seconded by Counselor Robinson, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this motion really goes in line with why we went to district representation. All of us have been outdoor knocking. I think the number one thing I hear through Back Central and through South Lowell is that they feel that there's an inequity that's happening across the city on spending around infrastructure and improvements. I think this goes a long way to show whether or not those are valid concerns. It gives us the data that we need to show, no, you know, things are fairly happening across the district or they're not because perhaps there's a large project that has to happen and it kind of throws it out of kilter, but there can be an explanation for that included. So I just really think this is just really to inform the public on the equity that's happening. Thank you.
Counselor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I agree with Counselor Scott. I just think that we should also look at the infrastructure in those neighborhoods first because some are older, some demand more. There are many different variables to what we're going to talk about when we do that. You know, some see speed more, some see different areas that of, we have more infrastructure in other areas. So if we continued like the downtown, if we put the high school project in the middle of this, it's going to be skewed as a neighborhood really high. So I just think that we should look at the RSR ratings and everything of the roads and say, okay, the ratings of these roads are really in deplorable condition and that's the reason why we made certain decisions. Because it can really look bad because at times when government goes in to do major projects, it makes much more sense to pave in one section of the city because of setup and takedown stuff. So I just think that we should look at, you know, the infrastructure at the same time. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.9, Counselor Robinson. Request City Manager have the proper department provide an update on no parking signs at 98 Four Bay Street. Seconded by Counselor Yem, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. This came, I brought this forward a while ago and I think it kind of got lost. It got sent, I believe, to the traffic engineer potentially for a study, but I don't believe a study was even needed. What had happened is along that stretch, there's been no parking signs already in place. And just the last stretch, there was no no parking signs. I've spoke to the gentleman that lives over there and let me tell you, it's a pleasure to have this man and his family in the neighborhood. They have taken such good care of that property if you drive by there. And it's only fair, it follows up the existing no parking signs. If it's okay, could I suspend the rules to allow Sandy McNamara just to briefly touch on it, please?
Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Getche, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to make a tiny correction. It's on the corner of Bovert and Victor. Victor Street, on the right side, is all no, is resident parking signs. It's not no parking, it's resident parking signs. And we've all had ours for many, many years and for some reason, I want to make sure I don't say it wrong, the house on the end of the street, he was not a pleasant man. And I don't know if they skipped him because of that or whatever the fact. I never came forward for it, but now there's a new owner that lives there. And I mean, anybody in this room to go by and see that home, it now belongs on Andover Street. He's done so much work to it. And he runs into the same thing. I have a garage, he has a driveway in the back that they block. So the resident sign on that corner should be there because originally, the whole right side was voted for the resident parking signs. So I'd appreciate it if, as quick as we can, we get something for him. Because again, it's, the house is gorgeous, he's doing so much work to it. He's a good neighbor to everybody. And just ask me for that simple request because all of us have it and he did not. So please, if you can give me a hand, I would like it. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.10, Counselor Robinson. Request City Manager have the proper department explore the installation of children's slow traffic signage on May and 13 Streets. Seconded by Counselor Noon, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Motion pretty much speaks for itself, but I think it might be a good opportunity to look any areas where we're going to have high pedestrian, especially children, traffic with school coming up. I think it's worth taking a look and installing whatever signage we can in-house. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could have some clarification, because I often thought, when I did ask for one myself, I called the proper department. I think the answer that I got from the person in charge many years ago was the state does not honor that, those signs anymore. There is no such thing as go slow children signs that you can get. I don't know, that's what I heard. So I just want a clarification because when I wanted one, they said that the state don't honor that, those signs anymore. I don't want you to wait for something we might not get.
That is true. Those are not legal signs and they're not enforceable, they're not appropriate sign by the MUTCD, the federal statute. We can look at that, those intersections or that, those streets for other things, though.
Well, I didn't want him to wait for a sign that was never getting there.
It was never that sign. It's been the city's policies since before I was here to, to not put those signs in.
That's my understanding.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the traffic engineer. Would you have, because this came at the request of some parents up in that area, is there something that you would recommend as an alternative that kind of conveys a similar message?
I can take a look at the street. I don't want to say anything right now without knowing the neighborhood and the street that off the top of my head, but I can go look.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. 511, Counselor Robinson. Request City Manager have the proper department provide an update on McPherson Basketball Court cracked ceiling and potentially future path for surface improvements. Seconded by Counselor Yem, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. You know, we, and I have to say, I'm thrilled to see what happened as a result of, I guess, whatever we're dealing with in another location. I went last Wednesday, McPherson Park, and it was great to see 120, 130 people over there, kids playing basketball. I think that's a great thing I'm hearing. Since, they'll probably be going back to their previous home for the rest of the season or whatever that may be. But I just think it shows that there is a large desire, a big demand for these kind of activities in the areas. And so anything we can do for a future path, I know, is it the CPC funds or whatever that is? is, where I think the past two years, we haven't seen any open space projects being considered for the funding mechanisms, so CPA. And so I think maybe some of this kind of stuff, looking around the city, would be good candidates for the use of some of those funds in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Yes, Counselor, McPherson Park was completed. St. Louis, as you know, is dynamite, we just don't have lights. But the SJA group is going to be playing over Father Maguire's for now, with the strict understanding that when the organization is ready to mobilize, that's the company that will be redoing Father Maguire, then they'd have to move back to McPherson. But as of today, the crack ceiling at McPherson Park was completed. And if anyone hasn't had an opportunity to look at St. Louis Park or Harry Allen area, it is absolutely phenomenal, over the top. So we are paying attention to that. And in regards to the CPA funding, that was a decision that we made, simply because we have a little over $8 million going into parks, and DPD is going in every which direction. But be sure that we'll be looking for that CPA. We can just stack that, if I'm correct with the Assistant City Manager, we can stack that and put that in reserves for the future. So there, there'll be different opportunities for the years to come.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And as you touched on, I've received quite a bit of calls. I went over myself. St. Louis surface came out absolutely amazing. Thank DPD and everyone involved that did that. In addition, I've probably received a dozen-plus calls from people in the neighborhood. Now, I myself don't shoot hoops, but having the single rims, they're saying, is huge. That's pretty much the preferred mechanism for the courts, outdoor courts, and the backboards. I've got a lot of, lot of comments on the backboard, so I think you guys knocked it out of the park with that one, and thank you very much.
We got double rims around McPherson Park, Counsel. So it's right, yeah. Never missed either, but it's all right. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. I turn to Section 4, General Public Affairs, 4.1. A vote accepting the provisions in Section 5 of Statute of General Law, Chapter 59, as inserted pursuant to Chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024 in so-called HERO Act, which authorizes an annual cost of living adjustment to be applied to certain veteran property tax exemptions. A stop to the meeting for all those who can favor, in favor, in favor. Portion of meeting is closed. All the opposition, opposition, opposition. The portion of meeting is closed. The motion to adopt by Counsel Mercier, second by Counsel Janess. Comments? No comments at court.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getche.
Yes.
11.
Oh, okay, all right, great. All right, turn to the agenda. 512, Counsel Belanger, Counsel Robinson. Request city manager provide updates as to the odor control mitigation at the Duck Island wastewater treatment facility. No second needed. Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know later on the agenda, we have some very good news on loan forgiveness for this project, but looking to see where we're at, as myself and my colleague across the river are still getting calls and complaints from constituents as to the odor, although it has minimized somewhat, and we are expecting to minimize even further once this project is complete. So we'd like to have an answer for our constituents, so looking forward. I know it's going to be all good news going forward, so thank you very much.
Counsel Robinson.
I pretty much concur. Would it be pertinent to touch on the part later on in the agenda now, bring that forward? Just discussing that relief that the city just kind of realized?
By Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Scott. Take 6.2 official report, sewer infrastructure project loan forgiveness out of order. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Mr. Manager. Mr. Baldwin, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is an informational report in the council's packet on an update for some good news that the city received from the Clean Water Trust. This is an excellent program that's available to the city to help us offset major infrastructure projects with both clean water and drinking water. The city has been successful as an applicant for many years. Mr. Fox is unfortunately unable to join us this evening, but his office, the wastewater treatment utility, the finance department, we work closely on these applications. One of the major benefits of financing through the trust is that you can finance major infrastructure projects at a very low rate. That's about 2%, which is much better than we're able to get on the market on our own. However, the even better benefit is that sometimes when you're in the program, they will offer loan forgiveness, which essentially takes a chunk of the project costs, and then the municipality does not have to pay that back. So there's a $6 million loan forgiveness related to a major upgrade project, which that represents about 24% of the project. That will translate itself into about $300,000 per year in debt service savings. So it's good news. We're thrilled. This is a great program. We're thankful to the trust and the state and the State Treasurer's Office. I'm happy to answer any questions, but very pleased to share this good news with the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baldwin, and I think that's excellent news. And as my colleagues stated earlier, I know Centerville and Belvedere, we share a big brunt of the stinky odors coming out of Duck Island, so greatly appreciated anytime we can see savings, or in this case, even better, loan forgiveness. Hopefully, that allows us to continue with our capital planning, to make those improvements, to improve that air quality for our residents on both sides of the river. So thank you.
Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to CFO, Mr. Baldwin. I remember a few months ago, we also received a forgiveness on similar kind of project. Is that, this is the same thing, or is that a new one?
That would have been this same project. And so it is, it's possible that there are multiple awards made for the same project. We've also benefited recently for a water, a redundant main project on the water side on the boulevard. So it is, we have many irons in the fire, as the city manager likes to say, when it comes to infrastructure projects and water and sewer. But yes, you're absolutely correct. We've had multiple turns of fortune as it relates to this project.
That's good news. Thank you.
Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for Mr. Baldwin. Just curious, the original loan that was taken out, and the fund, this funding that was done, was that done through the enterprise fund, or through the general fund, or somewhere else?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. That was funded by the enterprise fund. We had previously a $67 million loan order for upgrades to the plant, among other infrastructure projects. In the meantime, we are now operating under a, over $160 million in debt that was authorized for sewer separation. This project is still part of the old loan order, the amount that wasn't rescinded, but it is paid back by the enterprise funds and paid solely by the ratepayers of the utility.
Okay, thank you. That was what I expected the answer to be. Just curious, what does that do for the overall health of the enterprise fund? If that's something you can expound upon.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. It provides annual budgetary relief, so by not having to borrow this, we'll save about $300,000 in debt service, which is a direct savings to the enterprise fund, and will allow for relief to the rate for the sewer enterprise. Now, as we know, there's a lot of pressure on the rate because of all of the work that has to happen for the sewer separation project in Centerville. So any opportunity to save money operationally or through debt service is welcome and is going to provide some relief to the ratepayers.
Thank you very much. If there's any organization out there that might want to forgive a capital loan of a parking garage, let me know.
Back to the motion, 512. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 513, we'll get to it.
Can I just suspend the rules to take the Lowell, the school department out of order?
Counsel Getche, second by Counsel Dakota. To take vote, 7.7 out of order. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 7.7, a vote to transfer $2 million schools. CFO.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before you this evening, counselors, is the vote, which is the second part of a vote that was taken a few weeks ago. So this, this vote will transfer $2 million from the city manager's contingency fund to the school department. You'll notice in the packet, the accounts were provided to us by the superintendent's office, the business office at Central Administration. The superintendent is with us this evening. Also was provided, as was requested by the city council, is a number of positions that were to be restored with the $2 million. So I'm happy to answer any financial questions that the council may have, but the school department is in attendance as well for any questions about their operations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments or questions? Move approval?
Well, I do have a comment, because in budget time, you can't add to it, you can only approve, accept it, or decrease it. And yet, there was a way that was found to restore, not the whole amount, but half of the amount, the amount which I thought was quite noble. I know that it was tough on both sides, for and against, but you got together, and now it's before us for that vote. I'm so grateful to you, Mr. Manager. I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Counsel Noon.
I also just want to comment on the vote on that. I know that I can, because my wife worked for the school, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote. The right things to do, because we pride ourselves, I say, the best public school around, right? The only city in town, the only city in town in the Commonwealth that you can walk from, you know, from K to PhD. I mean, this is a cornerstone, and Lowell Public School have done a great job under the leadership of Liam Skinner. I think we, we promise this as when we vote for the budget, that this is our way to do it through the manager contingency account, and that when that time come, that we, as a council, will support it. Although I cannot vote for it, I urge my colleague to do so.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. So as a result of this transfer, $2 million, all of these positions are guaranteed, fully funded for this fiscal year with the breakdown here?
Come to the podium, please.
So the total of $2 million with all the, all the transfers to account numbers, also is, I mean, I'm not sure, I've heard about the creation of an additional administrative position for $150,000 over on the school side. Is that also correct?
So if I may, just while I'm at the podium, just say, I'm grateful to the mayor, city council, manager, and so on, for attending to the matter, and I'm grateful, in advance, for your support of this motion. It is true that we were cutting, given the budget, 53 positions. I believe on the list in front of you, there are 38 to be restored. So there's an additional 15 that we're not restoring. We're restoring the 38 you see, plus some funding for after-school programs. We don't have a deficit. We don't have a structural deficit in the school department. That's a term I've heard used. We are, we are responsible with our budgeting. Last year, when ESSER funds ran out in the springtime, we were short $14 million. So we cut $14 million, most of it from central office, in order to preserve positions in schools. The difference this year was that the cut was not related to federal and state and so on, it was related to city funds. And so we appealed to the council, and again, we appreciate your willingness to tackle it. If the Trump administration cuts title funds, we'll adjust our budget, have no choice. If the state runs into trouble in the middle of the year, and they have 9C cuts, we'll adjust our budget. We don't have a deficit. We don't have a deficit. Some of the narrative on this has not been correct, Counselor, and some of the narrative, I think, has been unfair. It is true, it is true, that we have a vacancy for a key central office position that pays about $150,000. That's true. That's not part of the funds we're talking about right now. That's already approved by the school committee in our regular budgeting. Happens to be a vacant position. It was in last year's budget as well. The reason I think it's unfair to lop it in with what we're talking about tonight, we were making reductions of various positions, the ones that you see on that list. The administrative position you're talking about existed and was already accounted for in the budget. It'd be like saying if we want to restore some traffic, traffic monitors for the police department, and therefore, you shouldn't hire deputy police chief, right? That'd be silly talk. There is an opening for administrative positions in central office, and we should fill it. And we should fill it. It's already accounted for in the budget. It should not be part of the conversation we're having about restoring positions that were cut from our budget.
Thank you for the input. But respectfully, if you have a vacancy for $150,000, and that's sitting as excess funding for salaries and wages, wouldn't that be factored into the ask that you're asking out of this $2 million and to preserve? Because based on some of the rates of pay of the tutors or the paraprofessionals, some of your tutors are at $30,000 a year. And so with $150,000, that could have preserved two or three positions potentially with that fund.
Counselor, you heard me explain a few moments ago, we cut $14 million last year, predominantly from central office. We can cut more from central office, and then the buses won't run on time. We could cut more from central office, then people won't be hired on time. That, that's not a good way to look at it, it's not a good way to do business. At the moment in time that we were in short change in our school department budget, there happens to be an opening for a position in central office, and so the two are being compared. It's not fair, Counselor.
It's, the two aren't being compared, in all due respect. What we're saying is funding. If there's $150,000, and the ways and means of how you operate on, with the school department, that's, I'm not trying, I don't understand the process, and I support, it's your decision-making with your school committee. The way it appeared on the city council side is, we're being told, without the $2 million, we have a list of 30-plus employees that are pretty much the boots on the ground with the students, in the classroom, the tutors, the paras, all of these different things. But then to hear, there's $150,000 sitting vacant, which is more administrative function, and yet, the people that are actually performing the parent liaison work and all these with the students is not being factored in because it's a need of central office.
Counselor, those are not employees, those are just positions.
Yeah, understandable. And so, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm going to support the $2 million. I think it's needed, this is definitely needed, and I'm glad to see, you know, that's what we asked, I believe it was Counselor Scott that asked for our explanation of, with this $2 million, and here it is. And thank you for being able to find a way and compromise, because initially, the ask was $4 million. So I mean, to see 30-something positions are going to be funded, saved, and they're going to continue the work with the students in the classroom off of this $2 million, it's greatly appreciated.
Counselor, if I may, and if any other counselors have any questions of this sort, I welcome it. And I welcome Counsel Robinson raising the question. Better that we do that and we talk openly about it, then there'd be a false narrative, okay? Part of the narrative that I'm worried about is that $14 million was city cash to the budget last year, was $14 million. That was the lowest proportion in recent history. Normally, in recent years, it's been somewhere between 25, sometimes 30%. The $14 million that, nobody complained about last year, we didn't ask for any more money, but that $14 million was about, I believe it was somewhere around 20%. We were reduced this year to 14%, 14.5% in city cash. The state has upped the amount of obligation that the city has. The city's obligated to contribute in this fiscal year $68.5 million. How is it possible that the cash proportion of that would be reduced? It doesn't make good sense, at least on the school department's side. So there's a whole context to what we're talking about, and it's difficult, I know, to get it straight, but I encourage you to ask any further questions you might have.
I mean, is, doesn't the school have to sign off on the maintenance agreement, charge offs?
Yes.
And so I think that's where it lies. I mean, if they signed off on maintenance effort charge offs, the problem lies with something that you signed off on. So I think that conversation has to happen.
Every single year.
Separately, every single year. So that's not something- So that's not something-
I don't believe it's been looked at for years, but yes, I think we should-
So that might be a problem. If it hasn't been looked at for years, but yet the signature has been signed off on for years, then I think that's where the problem lies.
Thank you, Counselor.
Independent audit is done every single year. Right, recent history as best. Counselor Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the biggest thing I was going to point out is that obviously, in the time that I've been involved in the schools and the city, there's been more work done to the schools in the past few years than I ever remember happening, exponentially, like, I mean, it's just explosive how much work has happened. I mean, the days have constant, the heat, no heat, this, you know, no boil is working, no backup boil is working, the roof's leaking, I mean, so much work has happened. And as the mayor pointed out, that is signed off on every single year. I understand coming back to discuss it and everything, but to go back and say that somehow it wasn't fair, I don't think is a fair thing to say. I do have a few questions about the budget itself, the school budget, and it relates to these positions that you said are coming back. I'm a little confused over the idea that people, paraprofessionals, have been pink-slipped when there's been an addition in the budget of 53 overall positions for paraprofessionals to the 26-year. So I guess I've had trouble reconciling that, and the number of tutors has gone up by 11 in the budget. So when I hear that we're cut, are these actual, I mean, and also, Dr. Hall had said that there's 40 open paraprofessional positions at all time, pretty much. So how do we increase 53 positions, always have 40 open already, and then give 17 paraprofessionals pink slips? I mean, are they actually getting pink slips, or are these people all coming back anyways without these increases?
At some point, Mayor, you can choose how far to get into this. I think some of the numbers are confused, but I'll explain the best I can. Paraprofessional positions are some of the lowest-paid positions in the district, and so they're high turnover. In one school last year, during the school year, we filled the position three times. They're very low-paid, and so people don't stay in them very long. And usually, in the summertime, we have about 40 openings. I believe that's what Dr. Hall is referring to. In the summertime, we had about 40 openings. At one stage, when we were making cutbacks, and we were consulting principals about what positions we could go for in their buildings, I encouraged them to consider paraprofessional positions for reductions. Because you could reduce the paraprofessional positions, and if Joe lost his job in this school, well, maybe there'd be an opening in another school. That was part of the thinking. 17 of the positions that are on your list tonight were of that sort. And so I think that was a sensible thing to do. So maybe the person ended up having a livelihood, having a job, I think that was sensible. But a position was cut. And as far as the number 53 goes, I'm not sure, Counselor, the 53 number in my mind is, 53 is the total number of positions that we were cutting in the budget. We're restoring tonight, if the vote is favorable, we will restore 38 of those positions. Again, the vast majority in schools.
Well, 53 is the number of FTE equivalents from 2025 to 2026, increasing in the budget with a total of $2.6 million.
I can explain at least some of that, Counselor. Last year, in the summertime, so after the budget had been passed, we added classrooms for the 80th school. There's not sufficient room in Chelsford, and so we added positions at John Dark in the convent over there. This, by the way, preserves, allows students to stay in Lowell and be educated here that otherwise would have gone out of district. Excuse me, I'm not, I'm sleep deprived, and I just returned from, I'm jet-lagged, and returned about an hour before this meeting, so I'm not very coherent tonight. New classrooms were opened at John Dark, we're now calling it the Sappisara School, in the summertime. So those classrooms that were opened in the summertime were not accounted for in the budget. They're for severely disabled students, and each of them, I believe, has three paraprofessionals in each of those classrooms. So that accounted for a number of those extra positions that were with us all school year long, but weren't accounted for when the budget was written in the spring.
But they happened after the, after last year's budget?
Yes, that's correct.
So then, out of the 17, the ones that you're talking about right now, as far as the $2 million that you need to bring these people back, so these are actual employees that would be brought back with these funds, or are they positions that will be brought back?
They're positions, Counselor. The person, a person in that position might be pink-slipped, and let's say, a month or two ago, when the budget was released, that person was pink-slipped, might be working in another state by now, they might be working in another community, they might not be available to be brought back. They may have taken another job in Lowell Public Schools, that's possible too, but the position is vacant. The paraprofessional that was helping in a classroom of 30 students, most of our classrooms have 20% to 25% of special education students in them, that's the regular red classrooms. Most of our classrooms, in addition to the 20% to 25% of special education students, have 30% of students who don't speak English as a first language. The paraprofessional from some of those classrooms was taken out and was cut. Those are the positions that are being restored.
Sorry, just one more comment, if you don't mind. So I've taken a lot of time to go back and read through the budget, and also go through DESI and everything else. So I went back to like 2019, and your population enrollment numbers are very similar between 19 and now. What I noticed is that your teacher and paraprofessional staff has gone up, but not substantially, but administration has risen a lot since 2019, with similar enrollment numbers. So I guess that's what concerns me. You know, we have spent a lot on repairs, and I think it's something that needs to continue to happen for the schools to be in better condition. I guess, I guess it's outside my purview, I mean, I take your word, you're the superintendent of schools, that it seems like even with pretty steady enrollment, it seems like you have a very different, substantially different population, is what you're saying, with the number of paraprofessionals you're adding, special ed instructors, a second assistant principal in many of the middle schools. So I guess that's something, I guess that I don't want to say has to be justified more, I guess, maybe. I mean, we're dollering out positions on the city side as well, we're not adding health nurses, different positions in the city. So I guess that was my concern.
Counselor, thank you for the question. I'll try not to ramble here. I said enough the last time I was here, I told you about a comparison with Wellesley Public Schools with positions. Yes, some schools have added a second assistant principal. It's the most basic, most basic addition that we could add to our schools, to provide for security, to provide for respectful behaviors in school, and to provide for supervision. It'd be silly to talk about, those positions are absolutely basic. And so, yes, they were added. We also had, prior to my time at central office, there was a superintendent who had some different ideas. They were not all bad ideas, but it involved adding additional administrative positions. I don't have in front of me, but I know the figure. This time last year, we reduced $14 million, mostly in administrative positions at central office and other costs. So I have made many of those cuts already, and I am doing so to preserve what's in our schools. Notice the list in front of you tonight. Before we had any reduction in city cash, we were already reducing positions at central office this spring. We were already reducing positions, even if we got $14 million in city cash. Look at the list in front of you. I believe there's a webmaster on there, he works in central office because he services all the schools. But they are classroom positions, for the most part, and I believe some funding for an after-school program. They're not administrative positions.
The cuts were too, classroom positions, though.
If you continue to cut, Counselor, and you've already cut $14 million from central office in last year, and you made additional cuts from central office this year before the $4 million problem, we at some point had to go to school principals and say, we need you to contribute to the reductions. Now that we have the option, we're restoring them, we're reversing that. And we're not reversing administrative positions at central office, we're reversing that list of positions that's in our schools.
Thank you.
Counselor Blenja?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you-
I apologize, Counselor Gitchia.
Yeah, I thought-
Go ahead. You're, yeah, go ahead, Eric, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Superintendent Skinner. Superintendent Skinner, I don't envy your job. You know, I don't envy any of this talk. How many employees does the School Department employ, roughly?
It's in the re, I don't offhand, no.
Range? 1,100, 1,200?
I'm not answering your question. What comes to mind, I have a phenomenal job. You should be, you should have the privilege I have of walking into classrooms in every school in our district. It's a beautiful experience. I'm dead serious now.
I have, I do have that privilege at Great Lowell, so-
You should see the work that our teachers and paraprofessionals do in classrooms. And if you don't have that opportunity, come with me.
That wasn't where the question was going.
Come with me, it's a terrific opportunity.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. Do we have around, or to CFO Baldwin, do we have around about a number of, how many employees at the School Department? Or with the city?
We're estimating 3,000.
Yeah.
And how many are with the city?
We're less than a thousand.
So they're three, they're three times the size of us.
Roughly.
It would be crazy not to have an HR director. It'd be crazy. If that's the point we're talking about, that's crazy. When you think about an HR director, in this committee, when we first started, we were talking about HR, we were talking about everything, the hiring process, job descriptions, and everything else. And now we're saying we don't need one when there's three times the amount in another place. I'm like amazed, you talk about employee assistant programs, doctor's notes, healthcare questions, benefits, posting, qualifications, everything like that. It goes both ways between us and them, right? So are they, do they take charge of any of that, or does that all come to us?
CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the way that the HR functions are split between city and school, the benefits for school-active and all retirees, as well as city-active employees, are done through the staff and HR in City Hall. The School Department, HR, and I certainly won't speak for the superintendent, but handles more personnel and hiring and those kinds of functions. Benefits are handled through the City Hall office.
When we started on the council four years ago, one of the main drivers were, every day, I used to get a call from a teacher, somebody in one of the buildings, saying how poor the environment was for learning. It's raining in buildings, it's hot, it's cold, the bathroom doors are broken and everything, and we pushed for all of these changes. So there is a cost somewhere, it has to come somehow, whether that's through the indirect cost, or however we get it back and forth. But I can't see how, and I spoke to the superintendent about the $2 million, and asked if this would work, and Superintendent Skinner said he would make it work, and he was okay with it. So I had the discussions with people on this board, and said, okay, is this a good number? So I don't know why we're at this debate tonight, but through you, Mr. Mayor, to Superintendent Skinner, you have 17 paraprofessionals, 13 tutors, one social worker, one behavior support position, one instructional specialist, one building-based substitute, two part-time parent liaisons, one high school special needs teacher, one district webmaster, an extended program after-school Twilight Investment. Are those all positions that are going to go back in the budget, based on this $2 million?
Yes. That is exactly what goes back in the budget, nothing more, nothing less.
Okay, so we're not losing anybody in here, so all these people, did they receive pink slips or layoff notices, any of these?
I think the answer to your question is yes, but you have to understand that if somebody knew their position was being cut, and they transferred into a different opening, they may not actually be pink-slipped, right? The positions that you're looking at, that we're looking to restore, are positions we're looking to restore. They were cut. The positions don't exist unless we get to $2 million to restore them.
Okay, so the district webmaster, is that position going back?
If we, yes, if we get to $2 million. This happens to be the only position that works out of central office, because he serves all the schools, all the webmaster work for all the schools, but all the other positions are directly in schools.
The behavioral support position, is that going back?
Yes.
Okay, so those positions are going back?
Absolutely, every single one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Blenja?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, thank you to the superintendent for coming in tonight, and the, what was important to me too, it was the clarification, Mr. Superintendent, on the position of the HR individuals. So if you say you need it, I'm going to take you on your word. You budgeted for it on the School Department side? You budgeted, you feel you need it? Then by all means, I have no issue with that. But what I want to do is remain consistent of what I've talked about going into this, is that the classrooms are untouchable, and we hold a high level on education, and I'm going to stay consistent and support the $2 million transfer tonight. And many of my questions were already asked as to the certain positions, certainly by Counselor Gitchia, that will remain, that's what's important to me. So let's make this easy, approve it, and move on. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Counselor Blenja said, a lot of my question concerns were already asked or commented on, but I do want to echo Counselor Rita Mercier's comment. This is one of the few times I've selected official that we're able to do something special that's outside the normal protocol routine to work around the budget, to meet the needs of RANPORN institutions in our city, that's Lowell Public School. Doing budget is never easy, as I mentioned before, we all do at home at the end of the months, and we do it professionally, and, you know, the job of the city manager and superintendent, you know, that's not very easy, trying to balance the budget for the city and for the school. But, you know, we trust the city manager to, you know, he's thinking about the best interests of the city when it does the budget. We trust him, we trust him with the hiring process, to make sure that we have good quality of life in our city. And in the same way, we trust the superintendent of the school to make sure that we do have the best public school in the country, to make sure we meet the needs of the students, the families, and the staff. We should not be separating, you know, between the city and school, as I mentioned before, we're one entity, one community. When we're going through tough times, we all should suffer a little bit here and there to make sure that, we make sure that the bigger things happen. And that is to have a good quality education in our city. I will support this vote, you know, it's not much that we could do more, but I'm very, very happy that the leadership in the city and the schools is able to meet at the minds and make sure that we continue the great tradition of supporting our public schools. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Just one more comment, real quick. As far as the letter that we received from CFO Baldwin about the bond rating, could you expand on that a little bit, the recommendations that are on there? And also, I just want to quickly comment as well about, you know, the money that we've put into the schools as far as maintenance and facility repairs. It seems like, I mean, this is something that didn't happen for many years, and there was a reason for that, because we're a poor city that obviously, you know, we struggle over what we can afford within the city. I think this really highlights, we've taken the time to try to make those improvements, but we obviously can't seem to do both, come up with the cash and come up with the repairs within our budget. I think that we really probably all need to work together to be better advocates around, like charter school reimbursement and other areas, because this is a tough situation, like I said, and I see the struggles on both sides, now that it's been on both sides. So I just hope that we can advocate better for more funding at the state level. Thank you.
Instead, morality and our trust is challenged, that's why, you know, so- Counselor Blenja, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, one more. So through you to the CFO. So, Mr. Baldwin, are you looking for one of the options that you presented to come in front of you? If so, I'll make the motion to approve option one that you presented with strength.
CFO?
That's what you're looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to address Counselor Scott's question as well, there's two separate items on the agenda. One is an informational item with an update about the state budget, which has been finalized as sort of the precursor for bringing this item forward. The council wisely chose to wait until the state budget was completed before bringing forward action. The funds were held in reserve in the city manager's contingency. But in that informational item, which was written before the meeting, you know, there are options laid out. The vote, which is under Section 7, is the item upon which we're asking the council to take action, to transfer the funds, the $2 million into the schools, which is a component of option number two. However, if, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll address Counselor Scott's question, which addresses sort of the options, as well as the commentary by Standard and Poor's, the rating agency, and offer a word of caution to the council as we look forward over this current fiscal year. So we met, as we normally do at the end of the year, with the rating- year. So we met, as we normally do at the end of the year, with the rating agency to put a rating on our year-end anticipation note, bond anticipation note. During our rating call, which is a standard financial procedure, we discussed the, the matter with the schools and the funding source, which is a appropriation from the rainy day account, the stabilization account. We have a few different names for the same thing. And they cautioned us that our outlook is stable, which, which is good, and our, you know, our rating is not in jeopardy at this moment. But if we do not have a plan to replenish reserves by the end of the fiscal year, then they could change our outlook from stable to unstable, or, you know, even worse than that, down the line downgrade the city's credit. So that is a, an item to be cautious of. It is, it will be our plan, it is our intention, when free cash is certified, to replenish the amount of reserves used to balance the budget, which is just over three million dollars. We will have to repay, not only that, the amount that was used to stabilize the parking enterprise to the tune of approximately two and a half million dollars, plus this two million dollars that is used for the schools. So number one, it is not a sustainable funding source. It's a one-time source of funds for the schools that can be used this year and will satisfy their, their needs. But it will not be there again in the future. And so the, the second item that's in the informational item that I want to bring to the council's attention is, in the final state budget, the legislature included language to give the governor nine C authority, which the city manager certainly is, is much more well-versed in this than, than I am. But this has happened to the city of Lowell before. Nine C cuts give the governor the authority to make cuts to local aid accounts in the fiscal year. So with that authority that was granted to her by the legislature, we are now on notice that at any point, the local aid accounts, and as this has happened before in my tenure, that is something that would happen to unrestricted aid, which is our primary funding source for things other than schools, for police and fire, public works, et cetera, and everything else. Those could be in jeopardy. Now, I don't expect that to be something to happen in the next few months. Likely, if it were to happen, would be after the turn of the calendar year, maybe after the governor releases her budget for FY 2027. But with the, the final picture of the state budget, because of some of the changes that were made to the charter school reimbursement, and the assessment for charter schools, the net impact to the budget is a positive. And so the city ended up with a net positive of seven hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. It is our recommendation that we hold that in reserve. If, if nothing bad happens, it will become part of free cash and available to us next year. But if, if these things that we are cautious about come to fruition, that will be an available source for us to deal with some of these cuts that could be coming. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Pastor Robinson?
Thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for the explanation on the three options. So basically, based on the three options, the, the transfer of the two million is a separate vote that the council has to take. But based on your recommendations and the three options as follows, how does it work? Can, can one of us just make a motion to accept the recommendation of, say, option one, as provided in the report, if that's the will of the body?
A point of order. Can we get through this, the vote in front of us before we start talking about another item?
Well, the two of them are very related. So the point of order, I mean, if you looked at the options, it's directly related to the transfer of the two million and what we're going to do with the actual funding that we saw that's tied with this. So to do both is, is not that challenging. So I mean, what's the will of the body here?
We'll get, we'll get to it. Where's the speaker, Mr. Clerk?
Jackie Doherty.
Thank you. I did register to speak on seven point seven, so I wanted to do that before any votes were taken. Good evening, Mayor Rourke, councilors, Manager Golden, and the city's administrative team. My name is Jackie Doherty. I live at fourteen Pawtucket Street, and this is my eighteenth year serving on your school committee. I'm here tonight in support of Agenda Item seven point seven, to transfer two million dollars to the Lowell Public Schools, and to thank you in person for this vote. It will restore two million of the four million less cash the district received from the city during its recent budget deliberations. With these funds, we will be able to restore some, but not all of the priority positions and programs identified during our budget process. With this transfer, the city's cash contribution to the schools for fiscal year twenty-six will be a total of twelve million dollars, two million less than we received last year, and the lowest cash contribution in recent history. Times are lean, and I know this council has many competing needs for funding, as well as a fiscal responsibility to all of us as taxpayers. I appreciate that you're taking funds from city savings to restore two million dollars, and that is exactly what compels me to speak tonight. It was June two thousand and three, twenty-two years ago, when I first came before this council to request more funds for our schools. I was chair of the Citywide Parent Council then, and if I remember correctly, the city's cash contribution to the schools was twenty-five million dollars. How is it possible that twenty-two years ago, the city provided the schools with twice the cash than today? I can't think of one thing that costs less today than it did twenty-two years ago. The state has a complex formula that determines how much Lowell is required to contribute to its schools, based on the needs of our students and the city's ability to pay. Wealthier towns pay much more to educate their children. The state recognizes that Lowell is not a rich community, so it expects, expects less funds and contributes more to the education of our students. Based on our students' needs due to poverty, special education services, homelessness, which we've seen an increase in that, and English-language learners, the state determined that Lowell's required funding for its schools is sixty-eight point five million dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. That represents about fifteen percent of our total budget, with the state contributing the remaining funds, along with some federal grants, which we all know is at risk now. Lowell meets its, its school spending requirement in two ways, by providing cash and what is called maintenance of effort, which the state accepts as part of the city's contribution. As the city has decreased its cash contribution, the amount charged for maintenance of effort has gone up. With this vote, the city's cash contribution to the schools will be twelve million, and the maintenance of effort will be approximately fifty-six point five million dollars. Meanwhile, the city's savings are at seventeen million dollars, the highest in the city's history. We can't buy curriculum, fund programs, or pay salaries with maintenance of effort. My point in all this is, thank you. Thank you for restoring two million dollars in cash. But please understand that our children's education must be a priority, along with all the other competing needs that you face. That means providing Lowell's fair share of school funding with more cash, so we can do the very important work of educating our students, who will become the future leaders and contributors to our great community. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just some clarification. You know, there were a lot of word games that were played at the podium tonight. Two active employees have lost their positions, two out of the fifty-three jobs. A third one that was laid off already has another position somewhere else in the system. The school department has hired over twenty-fifty employees over the past five years. That came from the superintendent's office, not from anywhere else. And, you know, we're going to vote tonight to give them two million dollars. So, you know, it was the, the highest we've ever had. So our hard work is going to be hurt, because the school department continues to add new positions. Any other comment? Any motion to adopt the vote by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Gitchia? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
I recuse myself.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Abstain.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Abstain.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Back to the agenda, five thirteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While we're still under suspension of the rules, can we take seven point four? We have somebody here for that.
Janess, by Counsel Noon to take seven point.
Mr. Mayor, while you added, could you also take seven point five, our orders as well, after seven point four?
Okay. What's, yes.
Thank you.
Seven point four out of order by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counselor Mercier, also first, aye opposed, motion passes. Seven point.
Five.
Okay, seven point four goes for us. I apologize. Right. Authorized City Manager to execute a license agreement with Aaron's Presence Incorporated. The motion to adopt by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counselor Yem.
Thank you so much, Mayor and city councilors. This is my first time being here, so I'm really honored to be here. And I'll keep this, oh, sorry, I'm Leah Okimoto. I, I run Aaron's Presence, which is at Tenkirk Street in Lowell. Aaron's Presence, for those of you who might not be familiar, is a youth nonprofit, youth development organization that I founded in two thousand and fourteen in memory of our son, who passed away as an infant. And we give, we give kids in Lowell and Lawrence as well, a unique opportunity to do anything that they want to do, as long as it's good for somebody else, as long as it benefits one other person, animal, or the environment. And since then, we've worked with over a thousand students, mostly starting in middle school in Lowell. And, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about this amazing project that kind of came to us and really aligns with our mission, which is to empower young people to become the next future leaders, but not just any sort of leaders, but leaders who lead with compassion and empathy, and know how to notice needs around them, and then take action to address them. And Raw Art Works in Lynn, a youth art organization, came to me last fall and was looking to apply for a sizable grant from the Mass Development Fund. It's called a Creative Catalyst Grant. And they were looking for partners in both Lawrence and Lowell. And so they approached me about, about joining the grant. And the grant, the thrust of the grant, the purpose, is to create some, some more public art, which is amazing and so supported by the city of Lowell. And to, our project will be to engage six of our young teens and adults in Lowell to paint five crosswalks. And the idea is called Pathways. And so it's really to promote in all three cities, projects that, art projects, that will promote walkability, serving our local businesses, and just healthy, healthy lifestyles in general. And so we have engaged six Aaron's Presence alumni, who are over eighteen, and really talented artists. And they have, we've really given them leadership of this project. Although myself and Matthew Walterding, who is a pretty well, well-known youth worker and artist in the city, we will be, we're both kind of spearheading this effort. And, and so the six artists, though, have chosen, have chosen to, to paint cross, to design art for crosswalks that are adjacent to schools. And so the designs as well will be kind of youth, youth-focused and kind of whimsical. These are a couple, couple examples. And I think will really just, just enliven those spaces. And I think they're going to be like at the, at the top of the driveways at the schools. And, but I think the students will really enjoy them. And I think the, the whole neighborhood around will, will really enjoy them. We're also going to be creating some education pieces about the neighborhoods and about the artists, which will be like tied to a QR code that we hope to post at both ends of the, of the crosswalks. And so we're really excited about the project. The, the students have, have already made their designs. And so we're eager to get started on the painting in early August, and be done by the end of August. And then we will also be hiring some of those youth to maintain and monitor the, the art and kind of deterioration over time, and that sort of thing. So, so yeah, if anybody has any questions, but yeah, we're really excited about this project.
Right, congratulations.
Yeah, I'm excited, too.
Counsel Yem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, I have just a quick question, and I just want to commend that what you try to do, and really noble, and give our kids something to do. My question is that, is that the permanent paint that's going to be staying on the, the crosswalk?
Yes, it's gonna, Matthew could speak about this better than I can, and he's going to be in charge of acquiring all the supplies and everything like that. But he does have experience, like, right, he was the one who painted the flowers outside of City Hall on the street. So he does know, he knows what he's doing better than I do. But, but we will be getting the, the proper paint that is going to be sustainable and durable. And all the other supplies, we will also be like cleaning and prepping the area as well before painting.
Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I love this idea, and the artwork's amazing. Do you have, are specific pieces of the art that you demonstrated going to certain locations already assigned, or is it just?
You know what? These are the designs right now, and then, but I don't think that they have specifically decided yet which one will go with which school. But I think they, they did get their inspiration from some, some things that they, they know that the school loves, or the student body in, in those schools love. So, but just in the next, in the next week or two, they'll be deciding which one will be assigned to, to which school. Right now, it's the Greenhodge, the Lincoln, the Butler, STEM Academy, and... So Robinson, Lincoln? Like, I'm blanking on the fifth one. Greenhodge? Greenhodge, yeah.
Thank you very much. I know Greenhodge actually just did a beautiful mural, they had a mural done over there, too. So I think that's really gonna...
Oh, the Robinson, that's the fifth one.
Oh, wow. Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great project. I'm really looking forward to seeing these when they come out. And maybe, Mr. Manager, you could take us all on a tour once they're done. It'd be a fun field trip for the group.
Definitely. Yeah, the grant includes also some PR and marketing, and just like a, a fun event for the community. It's really all about community building, bringing people and neighborhoods together. Thank you.
Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm all excited about this project. Those paintings are gorgeous. And when the residents see them on the sidewalk, they'll love them. And I also want to comment on this beautiful young lady here, who has so much patience. Thank you for bringing her in. She's cute. Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote has already been made and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Eleven years.
We already did a motion to suspend the rule, take seven point five out of order. It's a vote to authorize City Manager to approve a Bino license dash senior center. Motion to adopt by Counsel Yem, seconded by Counselor Noon. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Abstain.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Okay, returning to the long-awaited motion, five thirteen, by Counsel Belanger, myself. Request the City Manager to provide an update as to the safety inspection protocols in our assisted living facilities. Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Counsel Mercier for that nice tribute prior to the meeting starting, as to the horrific loss of life in that Fall River Assisted Living Center. And to call anything less of a tragedy would be an understatement. So what comes to mind, I think, to all of us is, what is the protocols here in our city to assure something like this, even remotely close to this, does not happen in our city? So what I'm looking to do, along with Mayor Rourke, is, you know, whose district is very heavy with assisted living facilities, we're very interested to know the safety and evacuation protocols, emergency plans, safety assessment. heavy with assisted living facilities, we're very interested to know the safety and evacuation protocols, emergency plans, safety assessment in all our facilities, to see where we stand and make sure they're safe and sound for the residents who live there. Because just simply, something like this cannot happen here. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Yeah, the Governor's Office put out a new requirement, I think they hit yesterday, in regards to safety and inspection protocols. So this motion seemed to be pretty timely, and I'm sure the Inspector Department will be, Fire Department, Police Department will all be up to date on what the new rules are. So, all in favor, say aye. Council Robinson, go ahead.
Thank you. I think this is a great motion, and when I saw this on the agenda, something that also popped in mind, I don't know if this is something that's already done, what is the makers' thoughts of including low housing authority buildings? I mean, we have some large-scale properties that, I mean, it may not be assisted living, but say, Ashambul Towers, for example. I think if we're going to start looking at buildings of that size, scope, and people that might not be the most mobile, I think, wouldn't it make sense to kind of get an inventory of those kind of properties as well?
Add to the motion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 6, Communications from the City Manager, 6.1A, Cambodia Town Way Funding. Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks Assistant City Manager Giovanni Byrosis for the report. Appreciate the way finding sign that was put up along the Gallego Terminal, Thorn Dais and whatnot, as far, direct people to A Cambodia Town. The reports also indicated that the Mass DOT made the city of Lowell not eligible for the tourist attraction signage. With that said, can we still move forward with the project to have, you know, some sort of signage for the Cambodia Town? Of course, working with the nonprofit like CMA, or Cambodia Town, or, you know, other organizations?
So, yes, we can. I think we have a couple options. If we want to pursue the traditional sort of mass dot version of this, we could identify a location specifically. So, for example, I don't know the address off the top of my head, but the island intersection there with the, that has like the memorial statues. You know, we could theoretically utilize the address of that building specifically as like the attraction that we're kind of encouraging people to visit. That's one option. I think the other option is to continue to expand the sort of pedestrian scale signage that we've created recently in downtown, to continue to work with Case, for example, on like the banner designs, to improve signage at the park itself. And then we did get earmark funds to work on the installation of Cambodia Town. There had been some discussion about having it sort of be similar, like an entryway similar to Boston's Chinatown, for example. Given that our Cambodia Town and Middlesex Street is kind of a busy throughfare, it's not necessarily pedestrian scale, so, but we are still working on the idea of whether or not there would be a larger component that we could do at the street level. So absolutely, I think, encouraging the growth of Cambodia Town as a destination is something that's still really important to the city, and DPD is working on, I think, a number of different avenues to try to make sure that we can present it to both people who are in vehicles and on foot.
Thank you. So also, you mentioned of the banner. The banners is going to be put up after the completion of the Clemente Park project, is that correct?
Yeah, the plan was to work on the Clemente Park completion. We also have some work that we had anticipated doing on Middlesex Street. So our idea was, you know, not to spend a lot of money investing in these new banners and kind of having the neighborhood like ripped up under construction. And so to roll out sort of new banners and signage when things kind of settle down and it's not so much of a construction zone.
Right. And I do agree with that in terms of the banners, wait until the project completion. I urge you and your department staff to work with the, those nonprofits, say, CMA, Cambodia Town, and maybe add Clemente Park Committee into that further discussion as to, you know, how we can move forward with the project, as mentioned by you, you know, set up meeting and give us a report on that. Appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Council Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you through Ms. Byros. I just want to say thank you for the report, and I like the idea that while you were exploring to put the sign, "Welcome to Cambodia," I like the idea of utilizing the blue, the blue sign that's on the highway, that we could start it now, it's available. And according to your report, there will be one on the Lowell Connector, Route 3 and I-495. You know, different businesses, they have their own name on that blue, so I think we should move forward. And at the end of your report, you say, should the council wish to move forward with this project, a Cambodia Town project partner would need it to be identified. And I have spoken with Cambodia Town, Inc., and they are so excited to be part of it. So do you need us as a counselor, a council, to vote on, to just tell you, go ahead, yes, go ahead, or should be okay just now?
Yeah, we don't need a formal vote at this time in order to be able to move forward on that.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo both Council Noon and Council Yem's comments. Thank you, Assistant Manager Giovanni Bees, for the report. Just one quick comment. It sounds like one of the biggest criteria to get the signage or what have you is to make that area a tourist destination. I can tell you from personal experience and observation that it is a tourist destination for many. If you see social media, you see many visitors coming to Lowell, they would go directly to that location, that area, special monument that you mentioned, to go take photos and find that monument, put on social media, and people have seen it all over the world. Not just people visiting from other states, but even the people visiting from other towns and cities in Massachusetts, even our very own governor, US senators, when they visit Lowell. They do make a point, go visit that area and find the monuments, take pictures and post it. I think it's a great tourist destination, and you mentioned, it's actually a very good comparison to Chinatown in Boston, where people, when they visit Boston area, they do make a point, they do plan, they do put on the agenda to go visit Chinatown, just to say that I've been there, you know, see the site, explore the food, and so forth. So it is a big tourist destination, also a big economic engine for the city. You know, we don't have a way to keep track, but you can tell by the number of businesses in that district, in that area, that they're thriving, that they're growing, and you have people that just go visit the small business from all over the state, actually. So it's a good project, and thank you, and encourage you to do whatever you can to make the project go forward, making it a tourist destination. Thank you.
Motion Response B, East Merrimack Traffic Common. Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Traffic Engineer Liz Altman for the response. East Merrimack Street is probably the biggest cut-through in my district, totaling well over 700 cars per day. It is a big off-ramp, if you will, to avoid Andover and Nesmith Street to get to the other side of the bridge, and heard from many, many of my constituents. So it's good to hear that it's being eyed for the paving list, and we can install the permanent speedhumps at that time. So I think that's a better avenue than the temporary one, so I would agree with that strategy. So looking forward to some improvements there. Thank you very much.
Motion Response C, West Sixth Street and Mount Vernon. Council Robinson and Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know as far as the West Sixth and Bunker Hill Ave, greatly appreciated. And to see the state is going to provide LED four-way stoppage, hopefully that will start to slow the flow of traffic. I'm glad to see that DOT has stepped up to give us a hint with these studies, and thank you as usual. We have the best transportation engineer. Thank you.
Motion Response D, Western Ave, sorry, Council Yem, go ahead. Mount Vernon.
I just want to thanks, thanks Ms. Altman for a great work, and I'm happy and surprised to see this on the agenda, and I'm sure that the resident who live around that corner would be happy. Four weeks ago, there was another severe accident for the driver who was on Cross Street, traveled from School Street eastward, and they couldn't see the car coming down from Mount Vernon southbound, because there are a lot of cars parking on those corners. So in addition to the four-way stop, if I may ask the city engineer to put a red and white sign that's no parking here to the corner this way, it give enough room for the driver who travel east from School Street on Cross be able to see to their left, there's a car coming down from Mount Vernon. So that's just my request, and again, appreciate that, and the resident also appreciate it. And I post on social media, and we got a lot of good kudos to the city, and grateful to the city to do that. Thank you.
Motion Response D, Western Ave Flooding Walkway, by Council Scott and Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this idea had actually come up in Toronto when we went to visit the Winter Market there, and Council Yem and I were discussing Western Avenue Studios, and he was talking about how important Western Avenue Studios, he thought, was to the city and to the Aika neighborhood, and that he wished there was a way to have a better connection to the downtown. So from that discussion, I kind of had this, I guess, a pie in the sky idea about connecting it via the waterway, because there's railroad tracks that kind of cut it off from the rest of the city, which was the concern that Council Yem had brought up. So I'm glad to see this response. I don't know if it's actually possible to happen, but it's just something to explore. I'm glad to see, say, DPD is excited to pursue discussions. I know the discussions around waterways is not an easy discussion. We've seen that with Muldoon Park, the kayak launch still being in limbo, definitely going to happen still, but in limbo due to that permit. But I look forward to future responses on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. May I make a quick comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for this report. The Western Ave Studio is really an attraction for a lot of artists who are coming to our city from outside of the city. And if we could do this, we achieve two things, the connection to Western Ave Studio, and also, and also the, it could be also an attraction and something special in the city. I understand CFO was shaking his head because we don't have enough money. However, it's good to be on the plate. We may, you know, never know, there's a windfall that we can get it done. Again, thank you.
Motion Response E, Branches Resting on Power Lines and Vernon Road. Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It says that on July 7th, the National Grid Forestry Division conducted a tree limb pruning in front of 286 Vernon Road. Thank you very much. I'm very, very grateful. Thank you to the knowledge of Sean Machado, who knew that National Grid actually did have a forestry division. I would have never known that. So thank you very much, Detective Clouseau, for finding that out. Thank you. The neighbors are grateful. Thank you.
Motion Response F, Trash Contract and Solid Waste Recycling and Parks and Rec Enterprise. Council Robinson and Noon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This report is excellent. What can you say? Anytime, I mean, I know for a while, we were in Lowell, the city, we were getting bombarded with complaints about service, that has since improved tremendously. And I think that's due to the hard work of the administration, the solid waste and recycling team, and then, and also Mr. Machado, I believe. So to see something else more encouraging is, on the contract that we put out, again, the RFP that was crafted and put out, it's great to see that we received competitive bids that ended up creating a competitive, you know, market for us. That, I was asked, based on this report, well, will the residents see savings as a result of savings being kind of seen with the successor agreement? And yes and no, obviously. It's not something we're able to go back and cut numbers, but you won't see an increase, or as steep of an increase because of inflation. I mean, that's just Business 101. But to see savings recognized potentially due to a competitive bid process, 1.2 million over the three-year period, and for collection, a potential savings of 4.2 over the contract period, which, again, we won't see, you know, till January 2026, is when the contract begins. And I did notice that the vendor that was awarded the contract isn't really named in this, so is it just a matter of finalizing the process, and then that will become public information? And it's just, it's great to see. I know that there are, is mentions of some efficiencies that we're going to be able to see, kind of some added function to the services that are being provided. So all this is great, and I think we need to just keep, you know, our foot on the pedal, trying to look for efficiencies and savings where we can. Thank you.
Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo what Council Robinson said, that this project is to start, you know, beginning of next year. And the saving on this project is projected to be, what, a saving of a three-years' contract, close to, what, $3 million saving? This is an awesome thing. At the same time, you improve the quality and the reliability of collecting service. On top of that, what I like, I know if Katrin Moses is here, she would like it as well, that this company is going to use a new natural gas truck, sort of, will reduce emission by 97% daily ball collection, which is an awesome thing. It's a win-win. On the one hand, you save money, at the same time, you also, you know, reduce the emission. So appreciate the effort to try to bring the contract into a way to save the resident of Lowell, but also to improve the quality of life, at the same time, the address the issues of climate. Thank you.
Council Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to Manager Golden. Manager Golden, do you know who has the dumpsters over at McPherson? Is that us, the city? Does it go through this? Do we know who has them over there?
City Manager.
I believe that's Waste Management, but that's something I can check.
But is that us, the city?
That'd be us. That's correct.
So do we charge that off in the parks' fees to try to capture those costs?
The parks' fees in total, I think, are $65,000. Yeah, the collection of, the collection of complete fees is $65,000. Do we, it probably, I'm going to ask the CFO, we bring that $65,000 into the general fund and it's paid. Yeah, it's paid from there. It's not necessarily, like Parks Department, excuse me, Parks and Rec or the Parks Department doesn't pay us that way, because the Parks and Rec fees are de minimis in the grand scheme of things. So it's just one of those pieces that we, as a city, think it's a viable option to keep that there.
To me, that's the only, I believe that's the only park in the city that has a dumpster there like that. And that's why, when you drive by, you're like, wow, look at this thing. Who put that there and why? Is it open space? But I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to CFO Baldwin for this. This is an amazing motion response, very detailed, and best of all, it includes the words "solid waste and recycling" and "savings" in the same sentence, something that we, it's hard to envision, but it's happening. So great, great work. And so along with the new contract that we anticipate after the first of the year, I'd like to be better prepared for that. And I think it's well worth exploring an enterprise fund for solid waste and recycling, I really do. So with that being said, the motion response to establish a solid waste recycling and enterprise fund, I would like to see that referred to the Finance Subcommittee for review. So we are in a good position, we're poised, after the first of the year, to make this happen. I think it makes a lot of sense. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Council Belanger, seconded by Council Chow, sent to the Finance Subcommittee, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Council Scott, you got something?
definitely improved and much to the, thanks to the management that has definitely been in contact with them, Assistant Manager Machado especially. My question is just, we did go through a long period of time where we had a lot of issues with them not picking up and we were fining them and everything like that. Did we improve anything in the contract that better puts us in a better position for those type of instances when they happen?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. I think, the council, one of the first things is the, I believe this is the first time we've gone out for a competitive bid within the past decade or so. And we did that to make sure that both the pickup as well as the drop-off on the other side was matched. And I believe we had six, six people that applied for this. So I'd like to say, yes, we did put in more safeguards into the proposal itself. But I think that all of these companies know we're a good client to have, but we're very serious, obviously, about service. And so the proof will always be in the future in the pudding, right? But they have, they've responded and it was very, very competitive. And I think that that just proves that in the future three years, this would be a great opportunity for us to continue to put this out. The contract as a whole is currently still a work in progress. We, we have a willing person, a willing company, and we're negotiating back and forth. So by the time we actually execute this, the council will have it so they can, so you can visualize it. But I do believe that we've, we held them to task. We're going to be holding the new company or the company to task in a firmer way. If that, if, want to make sure I didn't violate anything there, Mr. Solicitor.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. 6.2 Official Reports, 25 mile per hour speed limit tracking. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council is, this is an informational provided by Ms. Altman, who is here to answer any of the questions. And I think it just begs a question that this council moved forward earlier with creating a 25 mile, now a citywide other than posted in certain areas. And I think it is showing that it is working. To the residents at home that will say, you know, and I saw so-and-so speeding or I saw something happening, we're never going to be able to stop every single person. But I do believe with the enforcement that we have had, with the education that we've put out, that it has worked. In certain areas, it's been, it's been, you know, the charts, the following charts, it suggests that in certain areas it's happened and it's been a great success. In some areas, it's been an okay success. But, so I think that the council moving forward with the 25 mph was a good idea. And I think that some of the calming, traffic calming measures that Ms. Altman has been bringing forward, I think that's another piece to help. And I think that the continued enforcement by our Lowell Police Department in certain areas, and every council here is always called about a particular street. So I want to say thank you very much because it does give our friends over at LPD an opportunity to say, hey, you know, let's concentrate on this. But I just want to say thank you to Ms. Altman for putting this together. It talks about volume. It talks about people really starting to pay attention to this. And if there's any questions, Ms. Altman's here for, to answer those.
Yes, I got Councilor Noon. Getchea, Dakota and Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Managers, and especially Ms. Altman for the report. Given that we have this, the data provided, identify location, and we certainly know which location hasn't been complying with the 25 or maybe exceed, way exceeded 30 mile per hours, what's the plans to maybe apply some sort of target enforcement in those, at least a couple of those streets that hasn't really complied with that at all, Ms. Altman?
Hi. I, when I find a location that has excessive speeding, I do share that with the police to some extent. They know already. They know where the problem spots are. This, the data that we collect is like open source data, so it's not everybody. It's not really like tracking every single person. So it's more of a high-level planning exercise. But they, when they hear about a specific location, they'll go out and enforce. But you can see in this chart, definitely a concerted effort was made citywide back in last February and almost every, every street that we looked at has a dip of, in the speed.
Right. I just want to comment also, Mr. Mayor, that overall, the data show that, yes, a resident, you know, attempted to comply with a 25 mile per hour's speed limit, with the exception of a number of, a couple of the streets. So that, hopefully in the next few months or so, that number may be coming down as well with the enforcement. Thank you.
Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Superintendent Houdon and Captain Damaris. Actually, radar detective machine was put at Stevens at Janess, I believe, and seen many cruisers pulling over cars on Stevens Street in the last three to four weeks. So it's working. And I've noticed that the speeding has gone down there. So just wanted to point that out and give kudos to the Superintendent Houdon and his staff.
Councilor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to Manager Golden. Manager Golden, if with September right around the corner and the kids getting ready to go back to school and everything, and you're looking at like Stevens Street, it hasn't come down or anything in the September. It's, and Van Amav is crazy too. And then when you start looking at like Pine Street, some of these are really thoroughfares to the schools. And when you get up on the hill, Beacon Street is over 30 miles an hour flying down Beacon, right where you guys are. So if we can just try to ask the superintendent of police to just, maybe we start enforcement right away to send the message, we're not going to take this during the schools. And we send it in September, maybe that'll translate into reduction for the year round. That says, look, we're not going to do this. If we can look into that. Thank you.
I'll relay that message, Councilor.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I actually wanted to make similar comments to Councilor Dakota around the efforts of the Lowell Police Department, Captain Houdon, I'm sorry, Chief Houdon, Captain Damaris. They've done incredible work in some of the areas. I noticed Boston Road is on here, Boston Road and Swan Street. It's one of the, they're constantly there when I go by. When I drive through my neighborhood, they've done a great job. And I've heard from all the residents out there how they've really slowed down the traffic in that area. I think they deserve that acknowledgement, that they've really made a difference. I'd also just add a few more things around this. Is there, are there any plans to add additional signage for the 25 mile per hour? I know a lot of areas seem to be long stretches without the signage. And also, any plans around like a road diet around like the schools, like, you know, putting more curbing or anything like that? Thank you.
Yes, I think one of the interesting takeaways from this is that when you look at the streets that have the higher speeds, they're the wider streets. They're the streets that don't have parking. They're not, they're maybe in more suburban feeling areas of the city. And the streets that are really low speeds are the narrower, denser, you know, streets. So I just think that's a little telling on how we need to look at future roadway projects and how do we address it from a systemic infrastructure type of look at it. Instead of, we can put up as many signs as we want, but until we do look at some of these wider streets and take, as we go through the repaving program and things like that, looking at narrowing.
Would striping, would striping on those roads help at all? Because I know, I have similar concerns, like Boston Road, like you said, is just wide open. A lot of them don't have center lines like Swan Street. I work in another town that has a lot of wide roads that now has made them kind of meandering, like their striping has made turns in the road that don't normally exist. So I didn't know if there's plans around that type of thing.
So for example, Swan Street is going to get a center line. And what that does is makes people not drive down the center of the road super fast. And people, some people don't like the striping. But I think in a situation like Swan Street, it's definitely will, they'll see some benefit from that. Also, as we go through and re-stripe different areas, we can certainly put in larger shoulders and narrower lanes to just visually, as, you know, some infrastructure projects are less expensive, right? Striping is certainly less expensive than moving curb.
Thank you for all of your work.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like my colleagues, thank you for this, to, to Ms. Altman and the Police Department for all their work in trying to rein in some of the speeds around our city. Something we all hear about, every one of us, doesn't matter what corner of the city is, people let us know that people drive too fast. So whatever we can do to slow people down, I think is good for everybody. I was just curious how the speed data is collected. Is it cell phones or is it?
It's Bluetooth data, like open Bluetooth data.
Okay.
We, we.
So you read the beacons and the intervals?
It's, yeah. It's very high level. Like I said, not everybody's connected to Bluetooth. It's, so it gets about 60% of the cars.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
It's not reading anybody's license plate or anything like that. It's not tracking anybody.
Councilor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very informative report here. And thank you to all involved Lowell Police, Ms. Altman. So, you know, this, there's some decreases, but they're pretty minimal, one or two miles an hour in all in all. But we'll take it, right? So efforts are working. And I'm glad to see the enforcement has, I mean, I recall many years ago, I think, along with my colleagues, where the Lowell Connector was heavily policed. It was very dangerous. It was, it was a big, big issue. That has really cleaned up considerably. And now this enforcement, we're seeing more and more take place in the neighborhoods where it belongs, where we here for our constituents. So that's a good sign. But that being said, now, Ms. Altman, what do you, what is the strategy going forward on the, on the traffic calming? Because we all know police can't be everywhere, right? And the demand is pretty high for enforcement, as you know. So the speed humps seem to be effective. So are you more partial to the temporary ones or would you rather see localized paving along with permanent speed humps in the neighborhoods where permanent is, as it states, permanent? And we don't necessarily need that many cruisers or surveillance. So which direction do you, are you wanting to head in from moving forward?
So streets that have permanent traffic calming, they're essentially enforcing themselves, right? They're keeping the speed at the, they're designed to keep vehicles at the speed that you want them to be. Not every place is appropriate for things like speed humps. So we'd have to look at different options. But on some of the neighborhood streets where we collect actual data with a city-owned data recorder and we identify a problem, then we can look at the policy and install permanent speed humps. And then that road is at 25 miles an hour forever, right? So then, like I said, self-enforcing. So then the police can concentrate on different areas.
Right. That's exactly, I agree with that 100%. So, you know, I think it's maybe important to, in each district, you know, street by street, identify the big cut-throughs as I have a motion response tonight on East Murmack Street. The bigger cut-throughs in the city for maybe target for the localized and the permanent speed humps all throughout. I mean, you got to spread, disperse them all over the city, obviously. But that is, I think, the best strategy. I know we have a handful, a couple handfuls or so of the temporary ones that are in demand as well. But that's just it, temporary. But I'd like to see us go in the direction, Mr. Manager to you and Liz, in the direction of more localized paving throughout the city. And permanent speed humps, I think, are a lot better solution and require far less surveillance by Lowell Police. So that's what I'd like to see going forward. Thank you very much. Great report.
Councilor Rusia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Liz. Liz, you did a tremendous job and you've been here the longest out of all the employees. Wait a minute. Except for Terry Ryan, I didn't see him over there. But thank you so much for all your hard work. And I don't want to give you more of a burden than necessary. You know how I softened it up for the blow a little bit? I just wondered if you could put a list together of all the speed humps that are out there and if they're permanent, temporary, if you could do that. Is, maybe there's not many, I don't know.
So we don't have that many out there right now, but they are coming. And we have on the transportation website, we have a neighborhood traffic.
Oh, you have it on the website?
And it's, if a person goes on their street, they can tell whether or not it's eligible or not, whether or not we've put.
Oh, that's good. Never mind then. That's good enough. I did not know that. On Fairmount Street, are those humps temporary?
Those are the temporary ones.
Temporary. Yeah, I hit a few of them today. That's okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll slow down over there. Thank you so much.
I think we ought to consider Burnham Road for a couple of speed humps.
I know you should.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. Again, as I said, thank you for all you do. It's, you've made a tremendous impact on the city in the traffic measures since you walked in the door and it continues to this day. So I really do appreciate it. I just, my only question is, will we ever get back temporaries in Centerville where we're going through the CSO process? It doesn't lend itself for anything permanent until we get further down in the phases. And we did see positive results on billings. I know residents have reached out asking, how come that didn't happen again this year? But I don't know, moving forward, is there any plan to reinstall some temporaries until we get through this CSO deal?
Well, thank you to the council for giving me some free cash last year. We were able to do a lot. We were able to do 32 permanent speed humps. And there will be several, there's four streets targeted in Centerville for that. So that, that's kind of been the focus is the permanent installations and working with the different departments to engineering and wastewater as they go through their projects to try and get the things done in that, in that manner.
Thank you. And again, maybe through, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, we're, we're probably a year or two at least off from even the first phases of being put back together or beginning to be put back together. What can we do, do in the meantime in any of those areas? Because I mean, again, we've asked the residents of Centerville to be patient and work with us and because that CSO is going to be so invasive to the neighborhood. But in the meantime, we still have the speeding problems in some of the known locations.
Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilor, we'll look this year coming for additional temporary speed humps. I know the one that we currently have, there's some problems with it a little bit, you know, laying it down. Actually, you and I were there during the first, the first application. So I do think that although we are still using those speed bumps, speed humps, we might need to look for another, I don't want to say manufacturer, another way to, to put those down. Because they, they are glued down and they're, they're posted down into the ground. So we've, we've experienced a little bit of an issue with them. So we'll, we'll continue to talk about that during our next transportation, our transportation horizontal construction meeting, which we had today. And we were actually talking about speed humps and where we're going to go. But for the most part, for the folks in Centerville that are listening right now, we will be looking at permanents along the CSO routes in that area. So hearing you loud and clear, we'll try to, we'll try to figure out a better way of getting that accomplished.
Thank you.
Moving on, official report FY 2026, budget update with Lowell Public School Funding. Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. Again, we discussed this in depth earlier and I would make the motion to go with recommendation option one at this point in time.
Seconded by Council Janess. Councilor Belanger?
Nope. I just, I was seconding the motion. I'm sorry.
Alvin Fears AI, opposed. Motion passes. Motion to accept a place on file, all the responses by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Rusia. Alvin Fears, yeah, I don't recall or not.
No.
Alvin Fears AI, opposed. Motion passes. 6.3 Communication, resignation of John Nicholson Jr. from his Board of Appeals, a motion to accept by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Yem. Alvin Fears AI, opposed. Motion passes. Votes to the city manager, vote 7.1, accept and expend $46,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, with Council Rusia.
Could we bundle 7.1, 7.2, 7.3 and 7.6, please?
Excellent by Council Rusia. Seconded by Council Janess to bundle those votes. So read them as a, 7.1, a vote to accept and expend $46,259.50 mass EVIP grant for parking. 7.2, vote to approve ORR permit for cobblestones. 7.3, vote to authorize city manager to execute a five-year contract with Exxon Enterprise Incorporated. And 7.6, authorize the city manager to sign a notice of hearing for 48 Kinsman Street. Motion to, by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Noon. Any questions? Council Getchea.
On 7.1, the electric stations.
On 7.1, the electric stations, the charging stations, will we be charging for these, Mr. Manager, or are these free also?
We are not currently charging, but based on statements last week, I'll be sending a memo up to the manager to request a funding structure with additional fees and things like that. So that's forthcoming.
Will we be charging before these get put in? Do you believe?
They're already in and they're already being used.
Okay. All right. So, so you'll be putting something forward?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Roll call, Sir Clark?
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
11 years.
Uh, now, 8, section 8, orders from City Manager, 8.1, order for a 60-day trial. We have the full reading and second reading by title. The motion to a drop by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Janess. Roll call.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
To hire someone to watch over his operation, then what do they do? You know, you got a parks foreman. We just hired somebody. Did we hire him based off of these practices? I just look and see that here we are. We just talked about the school department. We were talking about an HR director and here we are again. You know, and we're going down the list. You got to work in foreman laborer. You got to, um, we can go right through. You have a chief maintenance craftsman. You got a maintenance craftsman MEO three. You have four work in foreman. I mean, it just comes down to what do we do? And I understand, Mr. Manager, your frustration. You were stuck with, I, I understand that. I, I did bring this up, but I don't know that we need to have somebody come in and do this when he can't certify one person. Nobody, nobody, this person who comes in, whoever they are, can't certify anybody in it. We need to send them out to get them certified so they can do it. Now, we're going to have someone teach them so they can go to a class that they have to take anyway mandatory to get certified. I mean, I agree with you. We do need, we need oversight. If we need the oversight, then let's not hire when some things are open and hold this person in there to do that job and then retrain in. But we should be hiring people who can do these positions in the end. And I understand you, you were put with this position with the people who came in and you have to live with that angle, but I just look at it as okay. I think you did sell the value is okay, here's a person who can do X, Y, and Z. That's what we're looking for to try to actually rein this stuff in. So I'll be interested over the next few weeks because this is just a go to the ordinance to see what we do gain from it. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, I do appreciate your efforts, your administration, what you're trying to do to our parks, to approximately 450 acres citywide of parks, open spaces, islands, and whatnot. Look, my colleagues make some great points. They know. Council Robinson has been there and I consider his opinion very valuable. But all this, what we want to see, the end result, what we want to see in our parks is not happening. We may have this position, this position, this position, but it's not translating right currently to where we want to be. I mean, no disrespect. This position brings a certain skill, skill set to the table to get us to where we want to be. And again, it's, it's part time. So $70 an hour, full time would be about $140,000 a year. Part time seasonal cuts it down to about 70. The idea here is to get this culture, this mindset of our current employees and the training to where it needs to be. It's not at that level currently. And to get there, this is what we're going, this is where we're at and this is what we're going to have to do. So, I mean, there's, all our parks, I think we can all agree, look good, the grass is cut, but there's a lot more to it than that. There's aeration, there's equipment. You're taking a look at parks, what can be utilized more and certain parks that are underutilized, what can be better utilized in certain ways. So it's, I think it's a well-rounded approach you're trying to all our green spaces. As just last week, while enjoying some vacation time, I was at Shed Park, three days, three days in a row, couple hours a day, meeting with constituents there, going over, one woman emails me very frequently on this tree, has to come down, this plant. I says, why don't you just meet me over there? Show me what you've seen. Well, she's not a full-fledged licensed arborist. We went through all kinds of stuff and to see the small things like the lower field baseball diamond in particular, where there's a series outside the fence of the lower field of, of a hybrid plum tree. First I've ever seen it. Purple leaves, look good, but doesn't produce fruit. She's like, this is a hybrid species that is very prone to disease. We went tree to tree to tree. Every tree is either dead or diseased, like she said. They says, these shouldn't be here. This was a bad decision to have these here. We looked at monuments, there's certain plants and trees around monuments. These aren't native species. These shouldn't be here. I don't understand the logic. So this is the stuff that's been going on with good people, with good intentions, trying to enhance, making poor decisions. And this is what we want to avoid. So I think this will help us in the long run and it's not going to be a permanent thing, Mr. Manager. It's going to keep it a year or two, whatever you see fit to get where we want to be and it'd be time to cut ties. This is not millions of dollars or even hundreds of thousands we're going to be investing here to get to where we need to be, to get our employees trained properly. I think this is necessary. So I think it's a good thought and well-intended to enhance our parks. And I will add lastly, that the Shed Park Summer Program, nearly 300 kids. I mean, a huge portion of this park is being utilized. So that's important to me, upper and lower fields. When I see things being utilized by kid, inner-city kids with instructors, inner-city instructors, that's, that's important to me. And so are these green spaces. So we need to enhance them as best we can for what I think is, is a minimal amount of money in the grand scheme of things. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with training, continue training for our employees. Either send our employees out for training or bringing outside, like consultant in these cases, to train our employees. I just question on this is that, is this a one-time consultant for one season so that our employees learn the trade? Or is this going to be every season?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the Council. My anticipation would be four months, closeout season, four months startup season. Would be eight months. And if you, I'm just doing the math really quickly, you're talking about $45,000 for 20 hours a week. Multiplied that.
So this is just those two seasons, right? Is that what you're saying?
It could be two years. You know, maybe. I mean, we're spending over $8 million in all of the parks currently right now with ARPA. And I think that trying to close our parks out, and I'm making this up, August, September, October, November, to close these parks out correctly and then maybe start February or March, right? February, March, April, May to, to open the parks back up. And quite frankly, the reasoning that I'm looking at this, 45, we could push this out to, to a private company if we would. I think we need to bring them in, bring this person in. You have, you know, and once again, this is just my thought process. You have 20, you have somebody working there 20 hours a week, working with each, each section of the city to try to do this correctly. And, and quite frankly, protecting the investment that we've talked about, which is the ARPA money of $8 million in parks. That's, it's just the idea. And it, it's something that had been brought forward, but I think it's, it's worthy to have what I would call supervisor of such that has the expertise, that has all of the, the available licenses that maybe actually would push some of our folks to get additional licensing. We've asked for additional licensing from some of these folks and they just don't feel comfortable. So maybe working aside of somebody that has these licenses could be an opportunity. And what I, what I view as a $45,000 cost is really about protecting that investment that we have on, on ARPA. Does it take one year counsel or two? I don't know the answer to that. I'd leave that open for the time being, but it definitely is a seasonal position.
So who would be able to tell us that whether it's one year, two years, or three years, or even more? So is this going to be an open-ended hiring, seasonal hiring for this position?
Well, if it were passed in two weeks from now, we would look to hire the person, bring them on as soon as we could, close out the rest of the year with our parks. As been noted, we have had a lot of, I think quite frankly, some of our parks are the best in this area when it, when it comes to our baseball fields. And trying to get, trying to staff up, trying to, to get the educational part of our employees in a more comfortable area for all, I, I would hope that everybody would want to go for their pesticide, et cetera. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, we see this throughout the, the city, the corners that are, that are growing up through the sidewalks and stuff like that. If that's something that we can actually take in-house, I think that would be worthy of us for the future. And it actually does change what we've been trying to do over the past three years, which quite frankly, I think this council has provided all of the, the monies to do this stuff. And, and once again, not to harp on the, the ARPA side of it, but we need to kind of, we need to change things. And we have been changing things, but we need to go in a different direction. And this is just a direction that in hearing from councilors here today or over the, over the last few months, is pushing that further education, pushing upskilling and pushing people to want to go for those licenses. And yes, it's going to cost us money, you know, if, if someone were to get a license to, to potentially increase their hourly wage or, or give them X amount of dollars or indeed put it into the new employee contract that we would have to negotiate. But we need to start someplace. And I just kind of figured, my frustration is I think we're trying to get in the right, we're trying to go in the right direction here. And, and the total finances to, to protect that investment, I don't think it's that much money.
Are you confident with this consultant, it'll be one year, two year, three years, is that will improve our ongoing, I mean, improvement on all the park going forward?
I, I, once again, Mr. Mayor, I apologize to you, to the council. I would think that one year is a definite, two years, the second year is a maybe. It would just depend on how quickly everything is being taken up.
I appreciate it.
But once again, we're going through a budget process next year, which we may be just worried about cutting grass. Right? I don't know where we're going to be in a year from now, but I think from this perspective now, we can indeed afford it to move forward. The, you know, FY '27, FY '27, we'll have to worry about that at that time to see if we can actually, you know, continue to move forward in that direction. But once again, it's, it's about protecting the investment that we are making and trying to, to really, you know, continue to educate and push our employees to, to get licensed and to continue bettering themselves. That's, that's all this is about in my thought.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Council Scott, Dakota Mercia. Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few questions about the duties. I guess I'm still having trouble reconciling bringing in a consultant versus what the parks manager's job is to do as far as training and et cetera. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, what would be different with this person? And what obligation do the employees have to someone that's not a manager to participate or to learn these skills or, you know, any of those things? I'm just kind of worried that perhaps this would be better, I don't, I don't know, as a contract, you know, with a set ending period of time, like this person is there to do specific duties, specific training. So I guess that's just my concern is I'm seeing this as a role of a parks manager.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. I can, I can't agree more. I'd have to, I'd have to work through the contracts to change that for the future, right? Within the collective bargaining piece. But having the applicator licenses, the fertilizer applications, those are all pieces that, you know, I'm not confident that anybody has, that we currently have on staff right now. So we're trying to fill a gap for the time being to get to the next piece. And, you know, whether it be, you know, the field stuff and everything, everything else in the language. I mean, what we're really after is the Massachusetts applicator license, the commercial applicator license, the turf certification, certified fertilizer applications. Right now, if we have to do that, we have to go outside of the city to, to get that accomplished. So as to Council of Noon was saying, is this a one-year thing? Is this a two-year thing? I'm really unsure. We might find out after the first four months, this wasn't useful or nobody learned anything. But I, I kind of doubt that, you know? I think that by next year, once again, if it's September, October, November, December, you know, and then we're off and then back on to open with this certification, with the application piece, I think it's, it's worthy, it could, it could be a worthy investment. We'll probably spend close, if not a little bit more, if we were to try to do this with bringing in an outside company. Bring in outside company, they're just going to go out and do the job. They're not going to, they're not going to be coaching or sitting behind, you know, team one, team two, team three, team four, talking to them about why they're doing this and why this is happening. We would just hire the ABC company, come in, they would do the application and our folks would have really little to nothing to do with it.
I understand what you're saying. Are we currently contracting those services now? Is this going to replace contracted services that we are already using?
We have contracted services, especially for overgrowth. And we've had, we've, we've definitely used contracted services.
So would that be eliminated by adding this position?
It would, it should be, yes.
It should be eliminated? And is that, I mean, comparable? I mean, are we spending quite a bit on that position, I guess, right now is?
Not have to get to the final.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just curious.
But once again, Council, I think that the point is to have our staff the ability to do this as opposed to...
And you have faith that they're going to take that initiative?
I, I, I hope so. I, you know, I hope so. When we first tried this, we tried just the opportunity to go out and get it, ask someone to get it and it, it really didn't go over well. Maybe it's the comfort of...
Are these applicator license requirement, are these part of the job positions for like the parks manager, the parks foreman?
No.
And is there a reason that we don't incorporate that instead of using an outside trainer?
Sure, we could in the next contract, yeah. We could absolutely, but we'd end up, once again, they could contract, they could push back and forth and...
No, I'm talking about the management positions, for them to have those skill sets. Management positions.
Those are, the management positions are also MVEA. They're union positions.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Council Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with the city manager and you answered one of my questions that there is some savings there. As it pertains to the ordinance, it says that this is a full-time position. One athletic field coordinator slash trainer full-time. It's not a full-time position.
Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Correct. Under the salary portion, seasonal position, full-time, it'd be, yeah, the 20, it's not 2,500.
Isn't the city low 18 hours or more considered full-time?
That's correct. So if I said 20, 18 would be...
So he, this will be a full-time position?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So just to provide a little bit of clarification, the intention is for, for it to be seasonal, full-time hours during those seasonal periods when it's working. So there, and it's, it would say in the job description, hours vary, but there will likely be weeks where that individual would be working 40 hours. But that would only be during the, the edge seasons. Again, I'm outside of my area of expertise, but it's not a 40-hour, 52-week-a-year position. It would be 40 hours only during those seasonal. So it's, there are not, not all of our positions are structured in this way. So it's not exactly part-time. There would likely be periods where it'd be part-time hours. It's a full-time seasonal position. I hope that helps.
So this person would be training employees on the field and then off the field, basically in homework, in a classroom setting? I'm just not, I'm just not, it's not adding up to me the 2,500 hours here.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Through to the council. The 2,500 hour, that 2,500 is not ours. I apologize.
Okay. So we just need to clean this ordinance up a little bit.
2,500 is the code for casual labor that we use in job postings. All of the bargaining units have codes. 2,700 would be ASP 93. 2,500 is the code for casual labor, seasonal type.
All right. I did not know that. So how many hour, how many hours are we actually think this person's going to be training in a, in a year or? Now, I agree with the position because of, obviously, all the ARPA money that we've put into this, all of our parks, and we could use somebody like that? Absolutely. And I, I think like Council of Noon says, you know, this could be a one, two-year position until we get some, our employees up to, you know, if they can get those licenses, great. And I, I do agree with it. I want, we, the amount of money that we put into our fields, I mean, let's make sure we have the right people training our people the right way. I'm just a little confused on what we're talking for time tape, for hours and that type of thing. I don't think if we add up 20, if we add 70 hours and it's a full-time times 18, that's like $150,000 position, isn't it?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, I can drill down on this for three weeks from now and give you what I...
Yeah. I mean, I am for the position.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
I'm just trying to get some better parameters here where we're going with this. That's all.
But I'm looking at, let me break down the cost as to what we think it's going to run.
Yeah.
I think another council had a question about what we are putting out and we can have that discussion three weeks.
That'd be fine.
I think it's three weeks from now.
That's fine.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the ordinance before this one and this ordinance now is going for a public hearing on August 12th.
Yes.
Okay. Having said that, I would like to tell you how I feel about it, but I think the law is such that you can't, you can ask questions right now, but you can't form an opinion before a public hearing. So if there's a public hearing, then this discussion could have taken place with, yeah, I support this, yeah, I don't know what's happening, but it's very interesting to, to listen to all the questions. I just thought no one should have gave an opinion as to yes, they support it or no, they do not. Because this is not a public hearing. It's August 12th. So I wouldn't, I would stop this conversation and only ask questions. You can ask as many questions as you want, but you can't form an opinion until a public hearing is over and it hasn't started yet. Just, that's my opinion. I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but that's what I say. So I would just ask questions here.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. So, so the core focus of this, if I hear correctly, is to try to incentivize our existing employees to get a chem app or fertilizer applicator license, correct? Now, how frequently do we have to outsource commercial applicators to come in and do the work? When we hear about overgrowth, that's all mechanical work. Restricted use pesticides is what you need a chemical applicator license for. You can't even apply it in their watersheds or in athletic fields where kids are playing on their playgrounds. So I mean, a lot of the stuff that's getting thrown around, it sounds good, but the real-life application of it on maintaining parks is maintaining parks. It's checking up on people while they're assigned to, to jobs. It's making sure that the work's getting done. And a lot of it is mechanical. I know they've been cutting grass and I think there's been a big turnaround, but a lot of the overgrowth that's being touched upon has been lack of weed whack, weed whacking. I mean, that's, you don't need a license for that. Any homeowner, you can go and purchase fertilizer to fertilize your lawn that's over the cone and not restricted use fertilizer and, and it's going to provide the same things. As far as irrigation goes, we have plumber irrigation specialists by title that are lands and buildings. We've heard about tree work that, that's, you know, people should have trees. That's what the conservation committee does, Conservation Board, Jane Calvin and them, that's what they do. I mean, for years, all of these things listed have been done. The less co-seeding, you don't need any licensing for that. We just hired a general foreman in the department. So that person's, I hope, should have some of this skill set because they would just brought on. And so a week after we bring, or two weeks after we bring an employee on as a general foreman, we're looking for a consultant to come in and help the general foreman to do what we just hired them to do? I mean, again, I don't see the need on 90% of the stuff in here. And by seeing somebody put on a PPE and, and apply restricted use anything standing next to them, there's medical tests that have, that are required if you do go and obtain that chemical applicator license with the state and it's not an easy test. So you're talking a significant increase in wages. Most people that have the chem applicator license are arborists and people that get contracted in because it's minimal treatments. You're not applying restricted use pesticides routinely or regularly. So the needs for this is kind of crazy. True Green Chem Lawn, I was just at Friends of Tyler Park. The Friends Neighborhood Group pays for an organic, pretty much over-the-counter fertilizer to keep that space green. It's, there's ways around it without having to bring someone in and say, we need you to show us. I still can't wrap my head around how we're paying over $200 in salaries on the top three positions in this area and none of these duties and responsibilities are being taught to our existing employees and staff. And, and I personally know a handful of employees that have 30, 40 years in the department that, Chris Apostolus, I'll, I'll mention him just because, every ball field in the city, that gentleman has had his hand on for the past 30 years. You could speak from low Catholic to low high to all these other rec departments. He knows 90% of the stuff listed in this and he does it tirelessly. We have in-house trainers. No one's offering our in-house employees $70 an hour to train other employees. So I, I just think this is a discussion that needs to be have with people with an open mind about how do we get to where we're trying to go and get efficiencies with what we're already paying for as opposed to we're having a hard time managing this aspect of it, so we want to throw more money at the problem. I think that's the conversation that we have to have. Thank you.
How's it get you?
Thank you, Mayor Rock. Through you to Manager Golden or CFO Baldwin. Can you just explain why we have to keep full-time? I understand you're saying 40 hours during one week, it could be 10 the next. Why can't it be part-time? And if it goes over that, then that would be, why, why would it have to go to full-time? I guess seasonal full-time.
CFO?
It doesn't have to. And I certainly don't know what the department demands of the, the need. The way that the, the job description that's attached to the ordinance is written up, it says $70 hourly, seasonal position, hours vary. So I believe that gives the department head some flexibility in terms of the hours. It's an ordinance position, so the schedule can be a matter of, I mean, I'll, I'll rely on the solicitor, but can be a matter of negotiation between the employee and his supervisor, his or her supervisor. I don't think it, it ties us to that full-time. It's just my, my thought that it would be needed on a full-time basis during certain times of the year.
Does full-time trigger benefits?
There is a trigger, yes. And it's if it's over, I think Council Dakota hit the nail on the head. It's over 20 hours, but consistently over a period of time. And that triggers a requirement of the city to offer benefits. The employee can decline them, but that, that's the, the law under, I think, the Affordable Care Act.
I mean, I, I understand the premise to the position because we've had major problems. We have the same thing at the water department, the issues with, you know, we called in contractors to do the work of people who are here. So it makes sense to have somebody trained. I guess the funding source, do we have positions that are currently open at the parks department that wouldn't be filled to fund this position? Is that how we would fund it? Or are all the positions filled over there?
Chair Oden.
There are open positions. They're open now. Some are in the, the process of being posted that will accumulate some savings in the salary and wages, but the funding source for this position would be the salary and wages permanent in the Parks Department appropriation.
So at the end of the day, Manager Golden, you, we talked about this multiple times, about trying to get somebody to try to help out that division because we knew that we weren't getting our bang for the buck over there. We all can say whatever we want to say and go around the, the loop here. And we didn't have people at the top of the food chain that were actually trained in the things that you talk about and Council Robinson talked about. My question comes down to full-time offering benefits to something that should be, basically, you guys were going back and forth with contractor. But we're bringing them in to now the city's payroll on the city's side where now there's benefits and have to be offered because we're at full-time. I think if it was under the 18 hours, you wouldn't see this issue. And I don't know how someone's going to be able to do that, but I'd like to see it. I'll still keep an open mind to it over the next few weeks and I, I look forward to hearing the manager come up with the strategy because it's, it's interesting to watch as we have employees in here who now we're saying are not really qualified, but they're in the positions and now we got to get them qualified. Thank you.
Members of the council have been saying that for a long time about our employees.
No, but we've just hired new employees, Mr. Mayor. We've, we've hired them.
Have a brief case if you want.
I mean, we took over some, but we hired and we just came here over last budget and said we're going to put work in foreman in each division. This was going to solve it and now we're here today.
It's others as well.
No, no, I absolutely, 1,000% agree. There are other departments. Thank you.
All right. So we have 9.1, 9.2, refer to a public hearing on August 12th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 10, Public Safety Settlement Committee, July 22nd, 2024. Councilor Noon next week?
Next week.
You got it. Thank you very much.
Ten-point-two, wiring inspector reports, one, Boston Gas, request replacement of existing gas main at one-dash-nine Sheldon Street. Two, Boston Gas National Grid, request replacement of existing gas mains at Lane and Horn Streets. Three, Boston Gas National Grid, request replacement of existing gas mains at Beacon Road and Nineteenth. And Boston Gas National Grid, request replacement of existing gas mains at East Merrimack Street. And five, Boston Gas National Grid, request replacement of existing gas mains at D School, New Spalding, South Loring, and East Streets, and also Wood Court. Motion to adopt and accept the accompanying order by Council Noon, second by Council Yam, Alfa FIA, opposed motion passes. Section eleven, claims, eleven-point-one, three property damage, motion referred to law department for a report and recommendation by Council Scott, second by Council Mercy, Alfa FIA, opposed motion passes. Eleven-point-two, Miss Lane is Dominic Sampson, request permission to address the council regarding establishing a tool library to assist in daily living. Did I submit?
I went to bed.
Okay, all right, we can put it off next week if he wants. Eleven-point-three, National Grid, request installation of one jail pole at Grove and Manhattan Streets, refer a public hearing on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, by Council Getche, second by Council Dakota, Alfa FIA, opposed motion passes. Eleven-point-four, National Grid, request installation of underground electric conduit for underground facilities at Middlesex Street and Eagle Court, refer a public hearing on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, by Council Robinson, second by Council Noon, Alfa FIA, opposed motion passes. Section twelve, any announcements, or Council Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two quick announcements to make. The civil service exam application process info session will be July twenty-eighth, three PM to seven PM, July twenty-ninth, five PM to nine PM, and July thirty-first, from three PM to seven PM, located at one-fifteen Middlesex Street and Lowell. Any information, please call the Lowell Police Department. I also have a announcement for residents who are looking to find an affordable apartment. The application is open right now for seven-thirty-three Broadway Street in the acre, and the application deadline is July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Please reach out to myself, or go online to seven-thirty-three-broadway.com for more information and to apply. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you, I, pretty much goes without saying, I'm sure everyone's well aware, but we're looking forward to this weekend in Lowell, it's, it's the annual Folk Festival, so look forward to seeing everyone out there over the weekend, and, uh, dress light, stay hydrated, because it's supposed to be warm on Friday.
And if I can add, the parade will start at City Hall at six PM on Friday.
Excellent, thank you. Council Getche?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke, I apologize to the city solicitor, I just wanted to say thank you for the temporary road repair ordinance that you put together, it's a phenomenal piece, I, we went right by it, and I didn't get to say thank you, I, thank you for that.
Council Bladja?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Robinson stole my thunder, but I wanted to add about the parade, but...
Council Mercy, do you have something?
No, not me.
Motion to adjourn by Council Mercy, second by Council Janes, good evening.